Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, August 13, 2018. Prior to getting on with the meeting tonight, I would remind anyone who would like to speak to the -- any of the items on our agenda tonight, or any items that are even not on the agenda tonight, to please fill out a speaker request form. We have several already. Give those to our deputy city clerk, Ruth Scott, who will get them to me, and we'll get those -- we'll get you on at the appropriate time. Roll call, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Markwart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Faber.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
A. Crescent.
I'd like to call our officer on duty, Keith Erkey, to the front to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keith. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I understand we do have an -- a change on the agenda. Dean, would you like to let us know what that is?
Mayor, we are requesting to move the item under "New Business," the presentation from DeKalb Community Unit School District #428 up from where it presently is to either before or after the consent agenda this evening, to accommodate our guest from the school district.
So if you look at the consent agenda, item F, G then would be "New Business," which on this agenda is item...
H1.
H. So we'll move H, and that will become F. Okay.
I'll move as amended, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the amended agenda. Alderman, Markwart.
I had one other request. Given the importance of the city clerk appointment, my request would be that that would be a separate vote rather than an omnibus included with the other appointments.
Right. We have -- on my copy here, we will be doing that as a vote item.
Okay.
And not as a -- as an omnibus portion of that, okay? So it's -- we have a motion on the floor to approve the amended agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
There are no public hearings scheduled tonight. If we would put up the first slide under "Proudly DeKalb," please. Those are two pretty good-looking young guys flanking that fellow in the middle, and I'd like to -- before we present some special certificates to the Lopez brothers, I'd like to ask their coach, Sam Hyatt. Sam, could you come up to the podium here and talk a little bit about why you're so proud of these boys and what their award was?
All right, so the -- these boys, we also qualified six other to the national tournament in Fargo, North Dakota, and it's like the -- it's regarded as the best tournament of the year for the high school people, high school kids, and they put in a lot of hard work this year and over a lot of years to get to this point, and we ended up with -- they ended up in the same weight class, and they wrestle each other for the national championship. So we -- and there was a USA rule that if brother -- because it doesn't ever happen, it's happened like three times in the history of the tournament, that if brothers wrestle each other in the finals, they could be co-champs. So we had not just one national champ, but two national champs, and it's a great story. They actually are airing a news -- on the news tonight on CBS2 Chicago, the 10 o'clock news, they have a story about them, if you want to check it out. And Fabian was also -- also placed seventh in the freestyle tournament, and we had one other kid get fifth in the freestyle, so...
And Fabian is a state -- Illinois State High School champion, is he not?
He is. He's a high school state champ, and he was a runner-up as a freshman, a state champ this year. He's got two years left, and his brother Damian will be a freshman this year.
Well, I'd like to read a certificate of recognition, and if each of you individually would come up, I'd like to present this to you. We are so proud of you boys. The first one is for Fabian. Which is that? You're Damian, right?
No, I'm Fabian.
Oh, you're Fabian, okay.
(Laughter).
Okay, very good. The City of DeKalb City Council and its staff extend congratulations for outstanding achievement at the 2018 USA Wrestling Cadet Greco-Roman National Championships. Congratulations.
(Applause).
This is going to sound awfully similar.[468.44][468.44](Laughter). This certificate is presented to Damian Lopez. The City of DeKalb City Council and its staff extend congratulations for outstanding achievement at the 2018 USA Wrestling Cadet Greco-Roman National Championship. Signed, Jerry Smith, Mayor, City of DeKalb. Congratulations.
(Applause).
Congratulations. That's a hard word.
Thank you very much. Great job. Really proud of you. Okay, moving on to more special items under "Proudly DeKalb." I'm going to ask Jean to make a few comments on this, but this picture, as was the other picture, are both courtesy of the Daily Chronicle, I think both made front-page treatment, if I -- if my memory serves me correctly. But what a great picture this is. Erin Lockhart, our school resource officer, and a young lady from our Camp Power program. And Jean, would you like to talk about its success this summer?
Well, this is the fifth year for Camp Power, and this year there was a decision made to try and expand it into more regional neighborhoods, other than just in the University Village neighborhood, so that was a big stride for the program. I guess to try and make it as succinct as possible, there have been so many of those very genuine, cool stories about successes, both that the kids have had, from doing better in school, to parents who have never had an opportunity to do certain things with the camp that led them to do things in their personal lives, like go back to college and to get jobs locally in the community, that continues to bring good fortune. So I think for all of us at the station, it's given us the opportunity to be involved with people in a different way than we maybe are traditionally viewed, and it's allowed us to build a better relationship. So for all that, I can't say enough good about Camp Power. Really proud of it. Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations again once to you, and you know, when I saw that picture early morning when I picked up my paper, wow. I mean, that sort of says it all, doesn't it? And so thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan Task Force update. Once again, our two liaison aldermen to the revitalization plan, our alderman Dave Jacobson from our first ward and Bill Fanouken from our second. They've done a wonderful job in their liaison's role, and they informed me tonight that Erin Stevens, our management analyst, will come up to the podium here and make a report. Is that correct?
I have a regular item on the agenda, so I was going to say...
What's that?
I have a regular item on the agenda, so I was going to say...
Oh, okay. All right. So you'd rather do it there? Is that okay, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. All right. Item number two under "Special Items" is our DeKalb Public Library Director, Emily Faulkner, who would like to speak to the item, "DeKalb Public Library Rebates Update." Emily?
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the public. Thanks for allowing me to come in and speak tonight. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on the tax money that the library is planning on returning to the DeKalb property owners. I believe that the mayor has given some information to city council, and I've spoken to a few of you about the issue in the past few weeks, but I've also -- I wanted to let you know as a body what's going on, and also inform the public of where we're at in terms of abating that money. Just for a little bit of history, due to the state budget impasse back in 2015, the library board approached city council to ask for an increase in the tax levy in order to secure a $4.6 million loan to finish the building. That was granted with the expectation that any funds borrowed would be returned once the state money came through. Those funds were collected on 2015 and 2016 property taxes in the total amount of about $992,550. It was done as a percentage of our total levy, so that's what it works out to. The amount levied was $1 million, the amount collected was about 992550. As you're all aware, back in March, we received the final installment of that $11.6 million grant that had been outstanding by the state. Once we received that check, the library board held a special meeting where they voted to abate the 2017 tax levy to the same rate that had been collected in 2014, the year before expansion began, and at that same meeting, they passed a motion to return the entire additional amount that had been collected during the previous two years, dollar for dollar. So the intention was to return that entire $992,550. That intention has not changed. Back in 2015, when that request for an increased levy came before city council, there was a great deal of discussion about how the funds would be returned. At that time, it was suggested by a former council member that the library return any money to the taxpayers in the form of a rebate check with information about how to donate funds back to the library as a form of fundraising. When the money came in to us back in March, that method seemed appealing for a number of reasons. It would allow us to let property owners know they were receiving a refund of the money in a more substantial way than the relatively small decrease in their property taxes that an abatement would cause. It would have allowed us to let property owners know that the library still has an outstanding financial need of approximately $900,000, and give them an opportunity to help us out with that, if that was their desire. It would allow us to have a straightforward discussion for our 2019 budget without needing to account for an abatement, and it was allowing us to hopefully bring in some new folks to the library who don't come in all the time to ask them questions about strategic planning. So the idea of doing rebate checks with a possible pickup at the library was favored by the library board and met with positive comments from the public, including a number of ideas for how to facilitate that process, which we incorporated into a plan that we were going to be taking into effect approximately now. Unfortunately, as we gathered information to issue those checks, we ran everything by our lawyer, and when we presented it to legal counsel, there were questions raised about the legality of the library returning property tax money in a method other than an abatement, because we don't have the home rule authority to do that. And then, as we discussed, how the city might or might not be able to lend us their home rule authority, we reviewed it with the library's attorney, city attorney, members of the library board, and city management, and determined that to issue rebates in the form of individual checks would put a level of liability on the library that our attorney and library board were not comfortable in assuming. The legal opinion issued by our attorney is that the library should issue an abatement of 2018 taxes collected in 2019 for the full amount. Last Wednesday, August 9, the library board discussed the matter with that advice in hand, and passed a motion to use an abatement of 2018 taxes payable in 2019 to return the funds. As we finalize our budget and levy request for fiscal year 2019, we will also create an abatement ordinance for that amount to be filed this fall. We were told by both dean and our lawyer that to file an abatement ordinance at this time was not appropriate. We need to wait until we actually have a levy request outstanding. So right now, we're in the process of writing that abatement ordinance. Property taxes will see a reduction in the library line of their property taxes next spring and fall. The average reduction will be approximately $90 per household for the year, or about $45 on each check, which works out to just under half of the usual amount collected for the library in a given year. We also intend to send a letter around the same time that the first installment is collected to let taxpayers know about the abatement and explain the difference in their taxes so that they are aware of the situation and understand that it is a one-year situation. I realize that this is not a statement that everyone tonight probably wanted to hear about our update on the abatement process. I apologize that our preferred method, favored by library, city, and many taxpayers, of rebating the funds via a check is not a viable option. The library board, our attorney, and I all agree that to burden the library with potential lawsuits when there's another option available that avoids all liability would be a potential waste of taxpayer money and cause a strain to the library that we could avoid through an abatement. I do have to apologize for not consulting our current legal counsel earlier in the process. When I was reviewing that tape back from December of 2015, there were a lot of conversations back and forth, and it seems to me that they had gotten legal counsel on it. It wasn't until we got close to finishing the process that I realized that they hadn't actually done that. It was a misunderstanding because of the way the words were coming out as people were discussing it. So that's on me. I should have checked sooner, so I apologize for that. Unfortunately, we're not able to do the checks, and we agree that we'd rather return the money using a proper and transparent mechanism than to put the library at possible risk for legal ramifications by going ahead with checks. So at this time, as I said, an abatement ordinance is being created for the full amount of $992,550, which I expect to present to the library board over the next few months, and then bring to you along with our levy request when we go forward with our budget for fiscal year 2019. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to update council and taxpayers on what's been going on with the library. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Our attorney is also here tonight, in case there are any questions for her.
Good. Yeah, I was going to ask you if you'd be willing to take questions. First of all, anybody from our staff? Molly, do you have any comments on Emily's report? I think we're pretty much aware of what she has reviewed tonight.
Correct. So I think this is the best way for us to proceed, and that will work with the library when we do the 2018 tax levy.
Okay. And before I turn it over to any possible questions, my question is very simple. So I, as a taxpayer, will be receiving the same amount of money in an abatement process as I would have been getting a check on a rebate.
Yes. Yes, exactly. Well, it'll be -- it'll be on -- no, you know what? This is going to get really subtle. If it was this year, it would be on your 2017 taxes.
Okay.
Next year will be on your 2018 taxes. So things change based on the number of -- and honestly, Molly can probably answer this better than I can, but if next year there are, you know, 15 new things, your percentages will change slightly. There may be a few dollars different, but it will be the same amount, and it's not the same amount exactly that you necessarily paid in back in 2015 and 2016, but there's no way for us to adjust for that.
Okay.
So to clarify, the rebate amounts will be based on the value of your property for the 2018 tax levy. So we've talked about it a lot, if you've done major improvements to your property, you know, your assessed value of your property goes up, that changes how that calculates from the 2017 property tax value to the 2018, or your value could stay the same, and then there's all those little subtleties on how a property is assessed. So the county does that, you know, the township does the assessments, the county gathers all the information, and the tax levy will be distributed between all the properties within the city, and that rebate will be abated on your property based on the value of your property for that 2018 tax levy year.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments on this? Alderman Jacobson.
I've received a couple of comments on it, and I have a couple of my own. While I appreciate that the reality has changed to a point, I know that there are several people, including myself, that are in the situation that we have sold a property in that interim, and I guess my question to you at this point is, what sort of liability do you have for those of us in my situation where effectively you took our money, and we're not going to see it returned to us? Clearly, it'll go to the new owner of the property, but they didn't make the loan to you. We did, especially when it was promised that we would all be made whole, and now there is a sector of the community that certainly will not be made whole. I guess my question is, how do you alleviate that issue and alleviate that liability on your side? And additionally, the other question I received today is the question of interest. Again, when you make a loan to someone, like the library asked for a loan, and those loan terms were promised upfront and agreed to, and the taxpayer was guaranteed that they would be receiving their money back, now that the library board has held that for two additional fiscal years, shouldn't there be interest due back to those people? I mean, clearly, you have it in your investment accounts, and you're receiving interest on it. If that's the case, shouldn't the taxpayer, being that it's their money, receive that same interest back?
Carolyn, maybe you can help talk about the liability. As for having it in our investment accounts, we don't have it in investment account. It's currently being held in a -- just a regular savings account with the bank. To my knowledge, it's not earning any interest. We didn't have the money up until this point in time, because the loan was still outstanding. We only received this money back in March, so it's been in our account since we paid off the rest of the loan in March, but we haven't been earning interest on it up to this point, and I would have to check and see if we'd earned any interest on it in the account we're holding it in right now. It hasn't been invested. It's just been held in an account, waiting for us to return it to the taxpayers. So, but Carolyn can talk more about the other question.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Craftifer with Ann Seglenke. I'm one of the library district's attorneys. So with respect to liability, that's exactly why we wanted to follow the statutory mechanism for giving property tax dollars back to the taxpayers, because right now, the way it works is a public body can issue a levy seeking the tax dollars, and if you decide you're going to return it, you don't necessarily return it to who the property owners were at the time that the levy was taken. It's all who's on record at the time that the abatement takes place. But because that's the statutory process for doing it, there isn't liability for doing it in that manner, because that's the manner that the General Assembly determined it should be done. But that was one of our concerns with refund checks. If we were actually issuing refund checks, and there really wasn't a basis and statute allowing the library to do that, questions like that would come up. So we felt if we followed the lawful mechanism, that would be the best way.
So those people that were promised to get their money back will just be out of luck?
If they moved. If they're still in -- if it's still the property tax owners, if they're the property tax people that paid the taxes before, and they're still living in the residence, they'll get it back.
So those people that are will just be out of luck? They gave you the loan, and they will not be made whole for that loan?
I mean, technically, it wasn't a loan.
They paid property taxes, and then they moved before they were abated.
Again, that was not how it was pitched by the library, so please don't try to claim that that's how it was.
Oh, I don't...
It was pitched as a library, as a loan by the community to -- as a bridge loan to be able to complete the project, as it was pitched to the community and as it was approved here, and that that money would then be refunded as soon as the state made good on their promise. And that's how it was pitched, that's how it was approved, that's how the library has said from day one it would be. And now you're saying, oh, well, it wasn't a loan, it was a tax, and sorry. Again, for those people that are in that situation, which are probably in the several hundred that were forced to effectively pay out that money as a favor to the library and to allow the project to continue, again, I think it's a little disingenuous now to say, oh, well, sorry, we didn't keep any records of who paid in. We didn't do our due diligence on our side and our work to ensure that you get your money back. Again, I think that will open you up to some liability, and I know that several people are already speaking to attorneys and have asked if I would be interested in doing so. Again, as far as I'm concerned, the library owes me money. It was my taxes that paid that bill. To give it to someone else that didn't pay in is unfair and improper, and certainly counter to every promise the library made from day one, as far as I'm concerned.
Any other comments? Alderman Faber.
You had mentioned the budget for -- that you're about to go over the budget for 2019. Obviously, as a city, we're looking to reduce the amount of our expenditures, and we've asked for some pretty tough cuts this year. Is the library going forward with cuts in 2019, or how is your budget looking?
So the way our budget is, we are likely to be asking for the same rate that was set back in March, which we were given, so that we would keep the same rate as was set in 2014. Within that, we are making internal cuts so that we can have a payoff plan for our outstanding loan of 900,000 -- it's actually $1.37 million that we still have outstanding on the debt that we owe. We've been working with the banks to come up with a plan that would have a five-year payoff starting this year. So our cuts have been done internally within that number, so that we don't have to come and ask council for more money to pay off that loan. So no, we're not reducing the actual overall rate that we'll be asking for. It'll be the same, same rate that was set back in March, but we have done internal movements there so that we'd be able to do a loan payoff that would be acceptable to the banks, because up until this point, we haven't had a mechanism to pay that off, and unless there's major fundraising forthcoming, we don't have a mechanism to pay that off. But they have requested that we do it within five years, so that they have some -- that they're made whole also, so that they no longer have an outstanding mortgage on the library for more than $1 million. So no, we're not planning on doing cuts to the budget as a whole, but we are working within our means to try to make sure that we can get out of debt so that we don't have to come here and ask for more money to do that.
Thank you.
Any further comments? You know, this whole process has been like a movie from hell. Not everybody is going to be happy. I still contend that through the process, we all tried to do the right thing, whether that be the library board or whether it be the city council. And I would hope that this particular report and what we see going forward will put to an end this chapter in what, let's face it, needs to be a good relationship between our library, the DeKalb Public Library, and the DeKalb City Council. So Emily, thank you for your report tonight and your update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number three, presentations. First of all, we have one proclamation, and that's General Aviation Appreciation Month. Whereas the City of DeKalb in the state of Illinois has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports, and whereas general aviation and the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport have an immense economic impact on DeKalb, in witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the City of DeKalb to be affixed this 13th day of August, 2018. I'd like to present this proclamation to the chairman of the Airport Advisory Committee, Robert Owens, and airport manager, Tom Cleveland. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Let's give him a good hand.[1692.11][1692.11](Applause).
I got it. That's all right. I got it.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Thanks for all the work.
You know, it's been my experience in the 15 months as your mayor that we have so many fine folks in our community who step up and serve our community through boards and commissions, and we've had a number because of a number that ended in June, and a number, again, that will end in December. And it's been my feeling that, you know, we thank those folks, but at least I'd like to publicly acknowledge those folks, and we have a number on our agenda tonight. We're going to present a certificate of appreciation to Amanda Durick for two years of service on the Landmark Commission, 2016 to 2018. We're going to present a certificate of appreciation to Tom DeVries for two years of service on our Economic Development Commission. We're going to present a certificate appreciation to Carolyn Massey for six years on the
We're going to present a certificate of appreciation to Carolyn Massey for six years on the DeKalb Public Library Board. We are going to present a certificate of appreciation to J. David Conlon for eight years of service on our Finance Advisory Committee. A certificate of appreciation for 11 years of service on the Citizens Community Enhancement will be presented to Cohen Barnes. A certificate of 11 years of service on the Citizens Community Enhancement will be presented to Bob Bowie. We have a certificate of appreciation to Mike Mooney, who is here tonight for 11 years of service on the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. Mike, if you'd come forward, don't fall asleep back there, and for your service, 2007 to 2018. Mike Mooney. Are any of those other folks who I announced so far here, I didn't see them in the audience? Good, okay. And then we also have a certificate of appreciation here to Mark Heine, who was on our Citizens Environmental Commission for 24 years. So we appreciate the support of all those fine folks. Okay, now moving on, item number four, approval of the mayor's appointments. And again, we're going to have the first appointment as a separate appointment, which will require a vote because of the fact that it is a different position than simply a board appointment. And that is the appointment of Lynn Fazekas as city clerk for the completion of a four-year term through May 10, 2021, or until her successor qualifies and takes office. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Lynn Fazekas as our city clerk. Any comments? Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
No.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion carried, and Lynn is in the back. If you'd just stand up, congratulations, Lynn, our new city clerk. Just a little bit of lay of the land information. We will be having a swearing in of Lynn tomorrow morning, right here, 10:30. She'll be sworn in officially as our city clerk. We will then hold a press conference for the benefit of area media who might like to ask any questions of Lynn or myself. You know, Lynn brings a passion for good government to this position, and while she certainly has not been hesitant to voice her support or her displeasure in how the city of DeKalb conducts business, I see that as a real plus. I really look forward to working with you, Lynn. I really look forward to you becoming a part of our team, and so we'll be swearing you in officially tomorrow morning, 10:30. Neither of us should sleep through that, okay? So, okay. All right, let's move on to the following appointments, and this can be done with an omnibus vote of council, if you'd like to do that. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to read each of the appointment, appointments, if I may. The appointment of Alderman Mike Verbic as the council liaison to the Finance Advisory Committee. The appointment of Don Whitmore as an ex-official member to the Landmark Commission. The appointment of Joyce, reappointment of Joyce DePesia to the Police Pension Board for the completion of a two-year term through June 30, 2020, and reappointment of Dave Castro to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the completion of a five-year term through December 31, 2023. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on these appointments? Roll call.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Okay, we look forward to having those people either continue or joining us on a board and commission. Okay, item number five, public participation. Again, this is an opportunity for folks to speak to an item not listed on our agenda tonight. We would ask them to, we would ask you if you come forward to the podium, and please try to maintain that three-minute limit, because we have a pretty lengthy agenda tonight. The first person who would like to speak to this, who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda is Dwayne Brown. Dwayne?
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. I'm going to ask the council to just consider this. Elk Grove Village is spending $300,000 to be the title sponsor of a college bowl game. The bowl features the championship teams from the Mid-American Conference and Conference USA. The move is the village's latest marketing push to expand the reach of its Makers Wanted campaign to promote a local industrial park. The campaign has a website, billboards, TV and radio commercials, and print ads. Mayor Craig Johnson said the sponsorship will be, I quote, "a perfect opportunity to use college football to share our message with the entire country," unquote. I'm asking the staff and council to just consider sponsoring a bowl game. We would promote our city's assets, such as a central location, proximity to interstate highways, newer schools with a ratio of 17.8 students per teacher, a educated workforce, the education level for people over 25 years old living in DeKalb is 92.5% have a high school diploma or higher, 38.6% have a bachelor's degree or higher, 16.2% have a graduate or professional degree. The median age of all DeKalb residents is 24.2 years. We have abundant parks and bike paths, a beautiful NIU campus, excellent airport, affordable housing. The median house price is $142,500. Public transportation, the Egyptian Theater, the Yellwood House Museum, the Glidden House, the Whiskey Acres, the County Board Incubator, the Pick Museum of Anthropology, and the Stevens Building, a new fitness center, the Convocation Center, good restaurants, excellent police and firemen, and a low cost of living in DeKalb. DeKalb's cost of living is 2.10% lower than the U.S. median. A renewal of downtown DeKalb and possibly two new hotels in DeKalb. Please don't mention our property values, taxes, streets, poverty rate, or crime rate, which as of 2016 was 348.8 compared to the U.S. average of 251.8 per 100,000 population. DeKalb County is number seven on the list of 101 counties with the largest number of people moving out compared to the number of people moving in. I have a scenario. What if NIU becomes the Mac champion? Wouldn't it be great if we were the chief sponsor of that? And I mean, it's a lot of money, $300,000. But I mean, we've spent some money on other things, which we haven't gotten anything for, like Janus Barlow and Associates, Associates for the Egyptian Theater, Ratio for the STEAM Learning Project, Camaros, which we'll have to see how that works out. And if you'll remember 2013, we did a consulting firm told us we were 30% overstaffed. That cost us a lot of money. Sure, $300,000 is a lot of money, but if we can jumpstart this economy, we have an industrial park, we sure need the businesses, and I just want it to be considered by the council and staff. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Dwayne. We have one other person who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda, and that's Ron Naylor.
Good evening, mayor and council, members of the audience. The subject matter, one of our favorite ones out there, is refuse and landscape waste. I know this is a subject that's been looked at probably quite extensively by the council over the last couple of months, and we now have a new service provider. And as part of that new service, I was really disappointed and somewhat taken aback when I learned at that meeting back in June that the landscape waste, roll-off dumpsters and the sites were going to be eliminated from the program. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to get down here in time that evening to voice my concern about that as well, so if I do it now, I've been sort of mulling this over for the last month or so. And as you talk and meet with other people throughout the community, I know there's a good number of other people out there that are really taken aback likewise at this move, and particularly in exchange for a recycling, electronic hazardous waste program. I went back and looked at the survey that you reviewed back in March, also the memo that accompanied that survey. And if you look at the survey itself, the strongly disagree, as well as disagree, on the item of removing the hazardous waste or paying another dollar a month for those, on it was like 47, 48%. And then when you look at the survey talking about hazardous waste and electronic recycling, et cetera, those strong agree, strongly agree, was like in the 25, 29% range. Likewise, on that memo back in March, there was no mention whatsoever. In fact, it mentioned that the community strongly wanted to retain their roll-off dumpsters and their hazardous waste containers. Likewise, in your June meeting, there was virtually no indication upfront that that would be a consideration, and I, somewhat at my fault, thinking, oh, not a problem there. I didn't attend your meeting, as well as certainly many other people did. But I'd certainly like to request that before you start rebating some of the savings, et cetera, and spending elsewhere, that the council maybe go back and take a look at this, and maybe have a further follow-up with the opportunity for the public out there to voice their comments with regards to this. I know several people out there are very disappointed and questioned, and I've used that landscape waste site many times, as well as I've known hundreds of other people out there, and I don't know how many of you have used it, but I know every time I go to one of these sites, the containers are generally overflowing unless you get there on Monday morning, right after they set the empty ones out there. It's a very well-used service, it's been there for 25-plus years. In fact, it was implemented when I was Public Works Director, and it was implemented to further extend your landscape waste collection services, not as a duplicate of that service. As I've heard some comments during that meeting, I think it stated that it's a duplicate service. You talk about duplicate services, you're recycling hazardous waste, it's truly a duplicate service. The county provides a fine service to that, and when you think back, you know, how many times do you have an electronic item, you dispose of, and your computer goes down, or a phone, or whatever?
Yeah, you're at four minutes now, Ron. You're a little bit over.
Well, I'm sorry, can I have another couple of minutes? But when you look at these roll-off dumpsters, you got like three sites, four dumpsters, 20 yards each, now that's 240 cubic yards a week, 32 to 40 weeks out there. That's about like 8,000 cubic yards of material that's got to now be hauled by the landscape provider from the curbs versus having it delivered to their site. And back when it was implemented, it was looked upon as a cost saving to the provider rather than an efficient cost, because the waste hauler had no labor involved in collecting that amount of waste out there. You hauled it to the dumpster, they carried it off. All that they had involved in it is just the trucking and their cost of their truck.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate your comments.
Pardon?
Appreciate your comments.
Well, I'd like for you to maybe consider that and to reconsider that, and to go back and think about that a little bit, because I think it's a very disservice to the community to eliminate that program after it's been around for so many years. People are not going to be doing as much landscape waste hauling probably as what they are. You'll have dirty yards again and storage in backyards. And when it was implemented, it was implemented to discourage that so that there was no excuse whatsoever for people to have landscape waste laying around in their yard. It was also provided so that the weekend gardener, landscape people, could take it immediately to the dump sites and not have to have it in their yards.
Thank you, Ron.
I'd like for you to reconsider that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tony Verbic to talk about something not on our agenda tonight. Tony?
Tony Verbic, third ward.
Could you get a little bit closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
Yep. And I'll burn it too, won't I? I'll burn the brush. I'm here to talk about wireless devices for a minute. First up would be the new LED streetlights that went up. I talked to the gentleman that were installing it, and I was standing there with a radio frequency meter, and I told him there was a high level of wireless radiation coming out of these meters. He says, yeah, I know, and they detect gunshots and a bunch of other stuff, too. Now, I don't know if the city is doing that. They are dimmable, so it might just be the dimmable nature of the LED lights. Through a Freedom of Information Act, they gave me 40 pages of text describing the adverse health effects of LED light pollution. You can download this through searching the city of DeKalb website for LED streetlighting. Another recent Freedom of Information Act request for health and safety information on both 5G wireless and the LED streetlights resulted in no records. Correct me if I'm wrong, but at least in the public domain, city council has not considered health and safety standards when approving these devices. Any other product on the market, from a blow dryer to a toothbrush, requires standards, and somehow the wireless industry is given a free pass. Without any health and safety standards, these wireless devices are unlawful and should be illegal. Plenty of peer-reviewed research on the adverse effects is available. Professor Martin Paul from Washington State University has a July 2018 peer-reviewed article on PubMed.com. It's called "Wi-Fi is an Important Threat to Human Health." Will the state of Illinois or FCC pay any attention to this, or will they continue with business as usual? The public has a right to know why these cell towers and wireless devices are being installed right next to their homes without any health and safety standards being considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. Okay, that completes anyone who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda, so we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Again, for the benefit of those at home and in our audience, our consent agenda is considered on an omnibus vote. All items are enacted by one motion unless there's any items that are requested by a council member to be removed from the consent agenda. Do we have anyone suggesting any of these be removed? If not, allow me to read the items on the consent agenda. Approval of city council minutes. A, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of July 9, 2018. B, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 9, 2018. C, minutes of the special committee of the whole meeting of July 10, 2018. Number two, receive and file accounts payable and payroll through file accounts payable and payroll through August 13, 2018, in the amount of $4,79,717.57. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Okay, now, if you recall, we did amend tonight's agenda to include the next item as the next item on the agenda, and it was formerly New Business Tax Increment Financing Review, DeKalb Community Unit School District, number 428. And we're going to ask our city attorney, Dean Frieders, to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We are at quite an interesting time in the city with regard to the existence of our current and proposed future tax increment financing, or TIF districts. This year, TIF II goes offline at the conclusion of its statutory term. In approximately five years, the central area TIF, or TIF I, will expire, and the city's currently considering the creation of TIF III, the Central Business District TIF, as a greatly condensed TIF to focus on those economic development projects in the city's core that the council has been supportive of as of late. We are in the part of that creation process where the Joint Review Board, which is a public body that's created by state law, has been formed so as to provide the city with an advisory recommendation regarding TIF III, regarding whether it should be created, whether the statutory criteria for its creation have been met, and other recommendations that they may wish to make. Over the months leading up to this, there's been discussion back and forth between the city staff and other taxing districts, and in particular, city staff and the school district. We had the Joint Review Board meeting just last week. At that meeting, there were some very spirited exchanges regarding the position of the various taxing districts with respect to existing and proposed future TIFs. And in the aftermath of that, we took a step back and evaluated where we were at, evaluated the state of communications between the parties, and looked at what the true interests of the city were as previously determined and defined by the City Council, the true interests of the school district, and how those intersect and align. And so, since the Joint Review Board meeting, I'm very pleased to say we had a lengthy and very positive discussion with Gino Galuzzo, Council for the School District. We have further meetings set. As soon as tomorrow afternoon, we have another meeting set to discuss the TIF districts, to discuss if there are ways of taking TIF II offline in its final year that have some financial benefit to the school district without adversely impacting the city or other taxing districts. If there are creative things we can do with TIF I to either shorten its term or to change how it's utilized, again, to produce benefit for all taxing districts without any adverse impact to the city, and without adversely impacting our ability to continue funding transformative projects. And third, if there are things we can do at the time that we're considering the creation of TIF III, before that comes to City Council, to address the long-term interests of all the taxing districts. Gino Galuzzo is here tonight to talk with the City Council and kind of express where we're at in that process. I think it's important to note that since the Joint Review Board meeting, which is just about a week ago, as I said, I think we've come a long ways in terms of the amount of information that's been shared, and the amount of ideas that have been shared, and the collaboration that we have from staff on both sides. It is our anticipation that we're going to continue working with the school district and with other affected taxing districts, and potentially even bring back an intergovernmental agreement between the taxing districts to address some of these longstanding issues with TIF I and TIF II, and to prospectively address ways of better utilizing TIF III, of establishing that in a fashion that's beneficial for all parties at your next City Council meeting. As the Joint Review Board timeline is contemplated, they have an official meeting that is set for September 4th. If I'm recalling correctly, the meeting was entered and continued to the beginning of September, which is in advance of the next City Council meeting, and is contemplated that the public hearing on the creation of TIF III, or that the next step in that process, rather I should say, would be at the City Council's first meeting in September. So again, we're hopeful that we'll be able to return back at your second meeting in August with more information, with a framework or an intergovernmental agreement to allow all the parties to continue this collaboration. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Galuzzo to step up.
Hi, my name's Gino Galuzzo. I thank you for allowing me to speak today. I think Mike Verbic took the lead on getting me in here today, and I appreciate that. As Dean had indicated, we've been working for several months with the staff and with Dean on trying to address some of the concerns that the school district had. Let me state also, those concerns are aligned with the interest of other taxing districts, because we're all treated equally. Since the Joint Review Board meeting, we have had some movement, and as Dean had indicated, met last Friday, in an attempt to work through some of the issues and concerns that we have. We're hopeful that we can reach agreement on those, so we can come here again at your next meeting before the Joint Review Board meeting on September 4th. Currently, as scheduled, the TIF, based on your timeline, is scheduled to be adopted on September 24th. If for some reason, there's some delay by the next meeting with some agreement, I just wanted you to know also, there's the ability to put off that creation date, really up until a date in February or March when the assessment rule is closed, and there's no adverse consequences for the city. We're hoping, the school district is hoping, that it can be a good partner with the city, that we can reach resolution on kind of the outstanding issues. I was prepared to come in today and run through some of those, but given that we're working together collaboratively, I'd like to have that opportunity to continue working with staff now this week to work through those issues, and hopefully become, as Dean had indicated, jointly at the next meeting with an intergovernmental agreement that would benefit all taxing bodies. With that, I thank you, and I didn't know if you had any questions for me before I leave.
This is an informational item on our agenda tonight. However, at Gino's invitation, and Dean, any questions at this point? It sounds like, at this point, we would probably be in a position to agree that you can work it out with staff, and we'll have the opportunity to take a look at whatever recommendations might come from your discussions. Does that make sense?
I would ask that I've just given an opportunity, again, at your next board meeting, so in the event there is agreement, I can indicate such, and if there's not, if there's some straggler issues, the school district would certainly want to make sure that the board is aware of those issues as you continue to move forward.
You're sure, Morgan? Welcome to do that, Gino.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one last point to add. We're also leveraging the school district's resources, and Gino's resources, and the city's resources to work with any different agency that would have information pertaining to this. So, reaching out to the State Board of Education with regard to how different financial outcomes could impact the school district. It has been a really positive course of discussions over the course of the past week or so, and we anticipate that that's going to continue forward. And as Gino said, we'll be back at the next City Council meeting.
Great. Thank you, Dean. Okay, now, we go to items for separate action, which is item G on your original agenda. The first one is number one, Ordinance 2018-027, Establishing Compensation and Benefits for Elected Officials of the City of DeKalb. This is first reading, motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To speak to this item is our Acting Assistant City Manager, Ray Munch. Ray?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the DeKalb community. Before you tonight is an ordinance for your consideration to establish compensation for elected officials in the City of DeKalb, which would include the mayor, alderman, and city clerk. If you recall, taking you back to May 29th, this was brought for discussion and tabled until tonight's meeting. Chapter two of the municipal code requires a biannual review of elected official compensation, and state law requires that in order for that, any changes in compensation to take effect for the following year's municipal election, that it must be considered and acted upon before October of this year. To take you back to our previous discussion, current compensation for elected officials in the city stand at $22,500 for the mayor, $5,400 for aldermen, and $8,000 for the city clerk. These were last reviewed in 2016. At that time, compensation for the mayor and aldermen were left the same, and compensation for the city clerk at that time was increased from an amount of $5,000 to $8,000. In preparation for this, you'll note in your backup items that some comparison was done to other communities that are typically used as our comparables to just sort of show where the City of DeKalb is as it relates to compensation. I would like to note some corrections in that backup material, and thank Alderman Fanukin for bringing this to staff's attention. The Village of Streamwood has a scenario where the person in the city clerk position also serves in the capacity of village collector. So, the salary figure there in the backup is actually the combined salary of those two positions. Further research showed that the actual compensation for the clerk position alone is $13,000 annually. So if you calculate how that affects the averages, that would bring the city clerk part-time average to $7,064 annually, which would be in line with our current city clerk compensation. Having that information, I will leave this for your discussion.
Any comments or discussion on this particular item? Assuming that if we do nothing, it just rolls forward, and there are no changes.
So the ordinance that's in front of you tonight contemplates no change? You do have the option of amending that as you wish?
Okay. Any further, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Oh, excuse me, Mike. I didn't see your hand there.
Well, I still think, with the viewpoint that I believe that the city clerk should be a full-time position and elected, the, my viewpoint, the part-time pay for doing that work when it's not only the five hours that we're here for a meeting, there's also the next five hours of work to put the minutes together, I still think that that $8,000 is underpaid. I didn't come into this position to make money. I was surprised, $5,400, whatever, we don't need to do that. And I also believe the mayor is, as you know yourself, it's not really a part-time position, if you're going to be doing it correctly. But it's also somewhat in line with other communities. I just feel that if we were to change something, I would entertain an increase into the city clerk pay, given the fact that that is a highly specialized position. There's a lot of legal ramifications that come from making sure that it's done correctly, and the job demands are such that it should pay a higher salary.
Thank you. Alderman Fanukin?
Just as a point of information, and Dean, please correct me if I'm wrong, that even if we were to change the mayor's or the clerk's salary, the saving, those impact would not take effect until 2021 with the, after the next election. Is that correct?
That's right.
So I think on those two items, we could easily delay that discussion for two years while we go ahead and move on. And that'll give us some time. Maybe we can devote a cow some night, Mr. Mayor, to having that discussion about the clerk's position and what we think it should be in the future.
Yeah, that would make sense to me. I mean, we do have some time. Nothing that we would do tonight is going to change the, those figures until 2021. It would give us the opportunity, perhaps even to dedicate a Committee of the Whole Meeting to that. What I see here, however, is that, you know, we're pretty much in line with the comparables in the region. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Do we need a second reading on this? And if we do, I'd entertain a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Number two, Ordinance 2018-042, Amending the Fiscal Year and December 31, 2018 Budget in the Amount of $17,823 for the remainder of the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan Contract with Camaros Limited. Passage on first reading, waiver of second reading is requested. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Speaking to this item, Management Analyst, Aaron Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I am presenting to you an amendment to the FY18 budgets in the amount of $17,628 to fulfill the total contract amount for the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan. That was for the agreements in total of $83,550, or this would be towards the total of $83,550. So I just want to make absolutely clear upfront that this is not going above the original agreements that was set actually almost one year today, just a year ago when the resolution was approved to have the agreement in place with Camaros. So, the project was proposed to run over fiscal years 17 and 18, with the project costs being split between those two years. So, essentially, half in 17, half in 18, and we are right where we should be as far as what's been completed so far in the project as originally proposed in the timeline. We're slightly behind that because of a delayed start, and the time that was taken to assemble the task force back at the very beginning of the project, last August and September timeframe. We have received the executive draft plan, and just recently, I received the full draft plan late last week. So we have a full draft plan that we are currently reviewing right now. Like I said, I just received it last Friday, so staff is in the process of going through that now. We plan to share that very soon. Camaros has committed to ensuring that the city receives the best possible product that we can receive. I'm working with Adam, as you all know, Adam from Camaros, on a regular basis to go back and forth and see that what the task force has exercised as what they would like to see in the plan, that's the final plan, as well as the feedback that's been received from the community and other organizations, that those things are all being coordinated efficiently, and that major concepts, if you will, or feedback that's been received at any point over the last year is not overlooked in any way, that it's all being assembled together, and that will then be turned over back to further review to the task force, to the community, and to City Council ultimately. So those things are underway. That process is in place. This amendment for the $17,000 would allocate the remaining funds to fulfill the total contract of $83,550. And with that, I would like to turn it over back to the mayor and take any further questions you might have.
So basically, we've taken the, this is the last payment on the contract. Is that correct?
Sort of. We've been invoiced for the majority of the contracts, and to finish out the final payments to the contract, we do need to allocate $17,000 from the general fund to the line item where we pay the invoices from.
Right. Alderman Fagan?
I guess I don't understand, if we knew we're going to be paying this amount of money, we had, we were in a contract with Camaros, why are we amending our budget now? Why was that, this not in our budget, and why do we have to amend the budget now?
That's a great question. I would temporarily defer to our city manager, Molly Talkington, and Finance Director.
So when initially the project was planned, there was the split of the funding between the two fiscal years, and when we were putting together the budget in September, October last year, there wasn't an adjustment made because of the delay in the month. So it's been recently, as Aaron has really taken over managing the project, that that funding wasn't then added to the FY18 budget. So we did miss it during our preparation.
Yeah, if I remember right, we agreed to the budget back in early August. I'm sorry for the Camaros. So what you're saying was just...
It was an oversight of...
It's an oversight on our, on our part?
Yeah, it would have been in the city manager's office and looking at it.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry for the Camaros. So what you're saying was just...
It was an oversight of...
It's an oversight on our, on our part?
Yeah, it would have been in the city manager's office and looking at it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman, Noriko.
I'm confused. The amount in the resolution is seventeen, eight, twenty-three. But you said, I think you said seventeen, six, twenty-eight. Which is it?
I, just to go back and clarify, because I'm not exactly sure what numbers you're speaking to, the total amount of the amendment would be seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Okay. So that's different than, because the amount in the printed material I'm looking at is seventeen, eight, twenty-three. So it should actually be seventeen, six, twenty-eight. So do we need...
Uh, there is, I think it's just a merging of two numbers on Aaron's part. So if you look at the amendment for the budget, the seventeen, eight, twenty-three, but the city to date has been invoiced seventy-two, six, twenty-eight, and then the total budget for Camaros will be the eighty-three, five, five, zero. It sounds like we just merged two numbers together when we're speaking.
So, the amount, the seventeen, eight, twenty-three in the resolution, in the ordinance, is the correct figure then?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm going back to the ordinance right now and I, I do see the hangup there. It's seventeen, eight, twenty-three.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure.
For the amount of the increase.
It's not a huge difference, but I think we need to be correct.
Yeah, he grabbed the tail end of the payments made to date. So it was just a mistake.
Okay. So it is, thank you.
Okay. We pretty, pretty much straight on that now then. Any further comments? Roll call.
Faber?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron.
You're welcome.
Number three, ordinance 2018-043, amending the fiscal year and December 31, 2018 budget in the amount of fifty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents for the demolition of certain properties and awarding a partial bid. This is first reading and I'm going to ask our community development director, Joellen Charlton, to speak this, as soon as we have a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Now, Joellen.
Thank you, Mayor and council. At the last city council meeting, Attorney Frieders reviewed a request for bids relating to the demolition of five residential properties and how the needs of those five demolitions are the result of actions related to a couple of things, both to court ordered demolitions resulting from longstanding code enforcement violations, as well as properties that the city has acquired through the county's property tax sales program. But those properties also include structures that have longstanding history of property maintenance issues. As a result of the request for bids that was authorized by the council at the last meeting, the city received four bids and the bids ranged in cost from seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars to four hundred thousand dollars. As described to the council at the last meeting, the bid included the option to do individual demolitions of any one of, up to five of the properties, or to do all five of the properties together at the same time. The action item before you has been prepared to award the bid for demolition of three of those five properties. The three recommended for demolition are all of those properties that are, that are the result of court ordered demolitions, and that is those properties where Dean has gone in through court as a result of code enforcement issues and the court has said, yes, we agree these properties need to be demolished. Two of those three properties that I just mentioned are in a TIF district and can be paid for out of TIF funds. It is recommended that the city proceed on the third property that we have a court ordered demolition on, given the unsafe and hazardous condition of the property. Payment for that demolition has been identified in the city manager's office training dues and subscriptions budgets, and that is included in the ordinance prepared for your agenda packet tonight. Again, the award for this bid has been prepared for those three of the five properties or those that represent the court ordered demolitions, based on those bids that we received from RB Services, which also include a ten percent increase to accommodate any unforeseen costs. The council could elect to proceed on the remaining two demolitions, but the only identified funding source for those projects would be general fund balance, given that neither of those properties are within either one of our TIF districts. That amounts to about twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Because these two properties were acquired through the county property tax sale, we do have a little bit more flexibility on the timing and payment of those projects. We could wait if the council decides not to move forward. The council could instead provide direction that we make those properties available for sale to the public and who would then come in and purchase, acquire, demolish, and rebuild. We are also investigating the potential to utilize community development block grant funding for demolitions moving forward. This is something we've talked about for a long time, because every year we go through court processes not knowing how many structures we may end up with in any given fiscal year that will require demolition. So it's very hard for us to budget for those types of projects. Going through this CDBG would, would identify a known funding source. In order to take advantage of those funds, however, we do need to do an amendment to our CDBG action plan, and we've not been allowed to proceed with that at this point because just until recently, we've not been, the funds haven't been finalized. So that is very new information. We have that information now. We could proceed with that, but it will take some time and to have access to those funds would be probably early next year. Again, the council could provide direction to, to proceed with those two demolitions and add them to the other three, but you did make a motion to approve as included on your agenda tonight. So if that's something you wanted to proceed with, you would need to approve a motion to amend, your motion to add those other two, and we would modify the ordinance to include the additional twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, plus the additional ten percent for additional costs. Because the unsafe conditions on the properties recommended for demolition, immediate action is required, so we would ask for your consideration of waiver of second reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So the motion on the floor is to authorize the demolition of the three properties?
That's correct.
Not the five? And that's the motion on the floor, although you're suggesting we could move forward with the other, other two if we wanted to. Alderman-Noriko.
The two that you're recommending that we defer demolition, how is the condition of those buildings different than the three that you're recommending immediate demolition? I would assume that they aren't in, you know, immediate danger of falling down or injuring any, anybody in the area or anything, but... I'm going to ask Dean to respond to the specific extent of the condition. I do know that, again, we have more flexibility to wait because it's the result of property that we have already acquired through the property tax sale, but Dean is intimately familiar with those properties. Over the course of years, he's pursued them in court.
The two other properties in question are 524 Clifford and 715 North 11th Street. 524 Clifford is located across from Prairie Park and there was flooding at that location more than a decade ago and the property has been abandoned since that point in time. The structure itself is in very poor shape, but doesn't pose any immediate risk of collapse.
Okay.
And we haven't identified any risks that extend to the right of way or that extend the uses of surrounding properties. So while it is certainly a property that needs to be dealt with, it's not one that presents an imminent concern in the same fashion that some of the other properties do. For example, 832 East Lincoln Highway has a second floor balcony that is falling off the front of the house that poses a threat to passersby on the Lincoln Highway sidewalk. 715 North 11th is a two-story property formerly used as a rental that was just abandoned by the owner. The conditions inside it are highly unsanitary and the property has deteriorated significantly. But again, as it's presently configured, it doesn't pose the same kind of immediate threat as do the other properties. For that reason, we felt comfortable proceeding forward with acquisition through the tax process rather than seeking an immediate court order. And as we've marshaled through that process, we have secured title to the properties and ownership of them, but we feel we have some more flexibility in how the city deals with them, that they're not as urgent or immediate of a safety concern.
Are both of the properties in question boarded up so we don't have to worry about squatters or animals and so forth?
The properties have been secured against access. We haven't, like, for example, boarded up all the windows on them. Where the windows or other coverings are intact, we've left them be so that the appearance of them isn't adversely affected.
Okay.
And Public Works does regularly maintain them to keep the yards mowed and such, and we do regularly patrol most areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman-Verbic.
Mayor, I'll amend that motion to include the additional two properties. I'll ask for a second.
Alderman-Fagan.
I've got a couple of questions. How, these bids that we've got and, you know, that's pretty good pricing for those other two houses, if we were going to wait and just pass the three that are in TIF and hold off on the other two to see if we can get any other money coming in from it, how long are these bids good for, for these two houses?
We did not ask the contractors to hold the bids open for a protracted period, so we have a somewhat limited window.
Right.
That said, the top bid RB Services is from a related entity of Sykes and Sons.
Right.
And we have had very good results with their demolition bids in the past as far as being cost effective. We can certainly reach out to them if that's something the council is interested in. I'm not certain how long they'd hold it.
Yeah, you know, my whole point of this is, I don't, I hate to amend the budget every meeting we have. And, you know, we've talked about, but then again, this is an opportunity too, and I understand that because, I mean, you look at the, the pricing on this and, and it's a good pricing, but I also look at it from, you know, and Dean, I brought this up before, is, you know, we've got plenty of other property that we've take, we've taken down and, you know, instead of cutting the grass or whatever, I don't want to mean, mean to repeat myself from last time I said this, but, you know, if we can sell off some of this other property, I mean, I mean, we're talking about twenty-seven thousand dollars and it's not much, but it is a point that we do keep amending the budget, you know, and twenty-seven thousand here and eighty thousand here, seventeen here, you know, it starts adding up to some real money. So I guess my point is, if we can do a pass, you know, sell off something here so we can pay off this here, so we're not amending this back and forth, I'd rather see that than, than just keep amending. But...
Yeah, I think amending is probably going to be a fact of life here, you know, especially given the fact that, you know, we have a tight budget, we have to make cuts, we're not always satisfied where we end up with, you know, the number. So, I, I mean, I understand your point, Pat. There is a motion that Alderman-Verbic has made to amend the budget. Is there a second to that motion? If not, we will move forward with the original motion, and that is to authorize the demolition of the three properties. Yes. Alderman, Markwart.
Just more questions. So on those other two, we would be spending down, if we were to approve the other two, it would be spending down fund balance.
That would be what I'd ask the city council if you would like to do that.
Mayor. Alderman-Faber.
So, I don't know the, the value of an empty lot. What is the value of an empty lot in one of these neighborhoods, either Clifford or 11th Street? Is it, is it ten thousand dollars or would a, would an empty lot be worth more than that or less than that? Because if it's more than that, nobody's going to want to buy these properties for a dollar.
Do you know the status of whether those lots are buildable or floodplain status?
And that's the other question is the Clifford one, is it, is it in the floodplain?
524 Clifford is within the floodplain, so building there would present some challenges and those do adversely impact its marketability. 715 North 11th is a relatively standard sized residential lot. It is buildable. As a component of a court ordered demolition, we're required to obtain an appraisal of the properties. And so we go through that process and work with a licensed appraiser to do so. And you can ascertain some information about building values and such. It's challenging to ascertain the value of a buildable lot, and what our appraiser customarily tells us is the value is going to be highly contingent on whether, if you own the property next door and want to expand your lot, it may be worth a lot to you. In terms of acquiring it to build a new structure on it with the value of surrounding residential properties, it'd be challenging to put a value on the land and then build a new structure and come out that you'd be having favorable market conditions compared to other existing properties that'd be for sale.
Is, so being that it's in a floodplain, is there any sort of, you know, obviously a grant or anything that would, that we could seek that would offset the cost of demolition to turn it to a, a natural site again, Prairie or something?
That is also something that we explored several years ago. The process with 524 Clifford began a couple of years ago and the city has had title to that now for, it'll be close to a year. At the time that that was last explored, there was not an identified funding source. There had previously been a number of grants, I believe, through FEMA for floodplain acquisition and demolitions, but when less that was evaluated, that was not an option.
Okay. My last question is, then if we decide to do the CBD, the block grant, we'd have to make a change, but potentially these could fit into that program?
That's correct. That's something that we would evaluate as we go through that process. It does need to meet certain guidelines, so Joanne Rouse, our CDBG expert in the department, is talking to HUD about what that would require, and again, that's, we would bring that back to you for official approval at a later date.
My recommendation then would be, I would go forward with the three. If the loss grant doesn't, if we can't get it covered under that, I don't, I don't think a private sale is going to happen for these properties. I would, I would have then gone along with Alderman-Verbic's motion, however, I think we should go forward with the three.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor to go ahead with the demolition of the three properties. There is a motion from Alderman-Verbic to amend this. Do, is anybody second that? If not, it's going to die for lack of a second. Any further discussion on the original motion? Roll call.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
And I understand because of the immediacy of this problem, we, you're requesting second reading?
Correct.
Move to approve on second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion passes. Number four, ordinance 2018-044, amending a special use permit, ordinance 2016-006, and modifying wall signage regulations on the building located at the southwest corner of East Lincoln Highway and South 5th Street, 444 to 460 East Lincoln Highway. Dunkin' Donuts, first reading. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Speaking of this item is our principal planner, Dan Olson.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Dunkin' Donuts is proposing to locate in a multi-tenant building at the southwest corner of East Lincoln Highway and South 5th Street. Building was completed in 2017. You see an aerial here of the building. Currently includes a subway, Marcos Pizza, and DeKalb Licker. Dunkin' Donuts would like to go on the far east end of the building, the remaining tenant space. There's also a drive-through, it's already completed at the back. The building was completed in 2017. There was an ordinance, special use permit ordinance approved by the council in February 2016 for the building. With Dunkin' Donuts moving in, of course, they'd like to have the appropriate wall signage for the location to meet their needs. In the ordinance from 2016, there were regulations regarding wall signs, what was allowed for East Lincoln Highway frontage, there was total square footage, and for the east and west sides, there was allowed one box sign, a multi-tenant sign at eighty square feet that would contain all the tenants. Dunkin' Donuts would like to have their own separate wall sign on the east end, and what they're proposing is to reduce the existing multi-tenant sign on the east side. They're allowed eighty square foot multi-tenant sign. What they'd like to do is propose a thirty-foot, square foot Dunkin' sign on the east elevation on the beam there and then put... on the beam there, and then put up a new multi-tenant sign that would be smaller, so the total combined square footage would still be within 80 square feet. They just have two signs instead of one sign. So, they'd still be within the parameters of the ordinance, they just have two instead of one sign. And since the ordinance did, was specific on that, they're amending that, and that required the public hearing and the presentation going forward in the process. The packet where the, shows the detail of the signage along with the multi-tenant sign, they'll have all the four tenants up there. The public hearing conducted by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that occurred on July 18th, they recommended approval by a vote of five to zero to allow the one multi-tenant sign and the one tenant sign for Dunkin' Donuts on the east elevation not to exceed 78 square feet. At the hearing, no one from the public spoke for against the project. The applicant for the building owner, Deepak Patel, is here. If you have any questions for him, they are requesting waiver of second reading, and they submitted a letter requesting that to the council. And I understand they're looking to open, I know they're doing work inside there by the end of the month, that they're shooting for, for the business to open.
Okay, so this is passed muster in Planning and Zoning?
Yes. unanimous.
And we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Entertained a motion to waive second reading?
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you for your investment in the community, gentlemen. Number five, Resolution 2018-103, authorizing intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb County dictating that the funds for the 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $16,014 be awarded solely to the city of DeKalb. Motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Speaking to this item is our police chief, Gene Lowery.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm bringing to you this resolution in regard to the Justice Assistance Grant Program. It's a grant application that we've made over the last several years, and what it does, it allows us to purchase equipment that's outside of our budget reach. So, it's money from the federal government to facilitate things such as investigating, interdicting, arresting, and prosecuting offenders, in particular offenders involved in narcotics, weapons, and other types of violent offenses. This year, the grant amount that we're seeking is $16,014. And typically, what's occurred is, because the DeKalb County is also an eligible government entity in regard to this, we enter into an agreement, an intergovernmental agreement with the county, and in this case, they've agreed to that, and pursuant to this resolution with your authority, we would further that agreement. And that agreement basically says that we would be entitled to the funds. The funds are a no-match situation for the city, so there are no city funds expended. Over the past several years, we've purchased a wide variety of investigative equipment that's been very beneficial. And in this situation, we're looking to purchase some additional remote cameras.
Good. Any discussion or any questions of the chief? Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Resolution 2018-104, number six, authorizing a street maintenance fee of $1 per customer per month on the residential refuse, recycling, and yard waste collection rate for the period January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2022. Motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Addressing this is our Public Works Director, Tim Oldeman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we were talking about using some of the savings from our new garbage collection contract for the purposes of street maintenance. You recall that on July 9th, during our committee, the whole discussion, we talked about the cause-and-effect relationship between the dump, or the garbage trucks going over our residential streets and the deterioration of those streets. Recall that we estimated the cost to pave those streets at about $27 million. And the lifetime of that asphalt is about 20 years, so on average, it's about $1.35 million per year if we amortize that cost over 20 years. Recall that we looked at, we presented a table, and it's in your memo tonight, that looked at the cost for each year that we lose in terms of the life of that asphalt. Whereas, the first year, we lose about $71,000. If we have an asphalt life of 19 instead of 20 years, that costs us about $71,000. If it's 18 years, it's about 150 and so on. We, so, our, so if we take that money that we are saving and apply it to street maintenance, we can apply up to about, we can get about $330,000 if we used all of it. Recall that City Council talked about $1 being a reasonable amount if the fee were to be imposed, and that $1 would equate to about $107,000 a year in additional street maintenance. To put that in perspective, we have, for 2019, we're anticipating about $720,000 from our local gas tax, 250 from our central TIF, that would be $970,000, and that would be it unless we added this 107 or so thousand dollars to that to make it just over a million dollars for our street maintenance budget. So although it's not a large amount, it is an amount that would definitely help out. And we've also limited the collection of this fee to four years during the garbage collection, the current garbage collection contract. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, and before we have any questions, we have three folks who would like to speak to this, Tim, so I'm going to have them, and then we'll open it up for council discussion. The first person requesting a time to speak to this item, once again, is Dwayne Brown.
Dwayne Brown, the revenue savings from the new refuse recycling yard waste collections contract with Lake Shore Recycling Systems should all be returned to the customers. This shouldn't be earmarked for streets. All the savings should go back to the customers. We just had a recent two cents per gallon gas tax increase, and in Illinois, residents are facing a 32% state income tax increase. There has been too much money diverted from streets to other projects in the past. Return all the savings to the customers. We've had projects, we've had money from, for the streets diverted to buildings, we've had it diverted to the airport, we've had it diverted to other projects. The part, part of the reason our streets are deteriorating now is because money has been diverted. Now, they want the dollar put to the streets, sent to the streets. This should go back to the customers. This is a savings for the customer. This shouldn't be diverted, this is another diversion. I want to make it short and sweet. Send this back to the customer. Don't divert this to the streets. It's been done in the past, it shouldn't be done in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Ron Naylor?
Somewhat diddle to Dwayne here, however, I think definitely the $1 should be, if anything, put back into the refuse fund for those dumpsters that you took away from the community out there. As I noted, the use of those, that service was extensive, and all of your indications prior to that decision being made indicated that it should be kept. And then this electronic and recycling and hazardous waste thing came along, which wasn't really much mentioned in much of the previous stuff, and then it became the substitution for the dumpsters, and then also, as a result of that, you ended up with a new waste hauler out there. I'm not one to go against, or say that funds, additional funds are not needed for our streets, but it certainly are. But I somewhat concur with Dwayne that it has been caused and created by previous city councils, as well as the city council I was on, as well as the continuing city council here, by administration leading the way as a way to balance that general fund budget, robbing Peter to pay Paul. You don't have a revenue source funding shortage in street funding. You're just spending it wrong. In your current budget, $100,000 for salt, $350,000 for electric, for the street light, and now somehow, $270,000 of the earlier two cents gas tax, that, or one and a half cent gas tax, I guess it was, that was created back for the police station to pay for those bonds along with general funds, I think it was for an additional $400,000 or so of general fund money that was created as a result of refinancing earlier bonds, and was a $400,000 savings to the city at that time, and that was intended to be continued on throughout the life of those bonds. Now somehow, that got changed around, but anyway, you're now funding the airport with MFT funds that you collected, saying originally, they were going to go to the streets, and in this particular budget, in addition to that, there's $60,000 for some fire security equipment of some sort, $50,000 for a message board, $30,000 for, I don't know, for F2, F1, or F3 fire station repair. Expenses that should clearly be in your general fund. You don't have a funding source problem for your streets. You have a funding source problem in the general fund, and you have departments in that general fund that you need to take a look at and/or raise other types of revenues of some sort, or cut expenses somewhere. You don't need more supplemental street funding at this point in time.
Thank you, Ron.
You just need to redirect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. One more to speaker to this, and that is John Anderson. John?
I'll go right along with Ron Naylor on how all this money, first of all, the state of Illinois is the third-largest tax collector on fuel in the United States. They're only beat out by California and Colorado. They get 50, what's it, 56, 66 cents for every gallon. Plus, you add the gas to that 66 cents, and then take the state sales tax against the whole works. So, my question is, just how much of this goes to the city? I know it's divided up between the state, the county, and the city for road repair. Just how much do we get out of those state taxes? Now, we'll talk about the city, city taxes, and what really, what really gets me is, Ron knows, but I don't know if any of you people were up here then, when they started asking the state, just what can we use this, this money for, for street repair? Can we use it for the light bill? Can we buy salt with it? And Lord knows what else they bought with it. This is just another tax. And another thing that upsets me is, is the use of these dumpsters going to be disappearing. Are we going to see all this stuff when this, when the dumpsters are gone? We're going to be driving down any street in DeKalb and see a pileout on the parking? This just is not, not a good deal at all. And I believe that what little savings we get, the public ought to get them. City has diverted money for years, and if they get back to where they, we're using the general fund to pay the light bill, to buy the salt, and Lord knows what else they snuck in there. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Okay, now we can, Tim, stay up there at the podium and see what comments and questions we might have on this particular resolution. Alderman Fanouken.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, one of the misconceptions going on revolves around these waste dumpsters. You know, I'd like to make it very clear, you know, in light of the letter that was in the paper yesterday and the comments tonight, that neither bid included leaving the dumpsters where they were. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
I think that's something that we have not very well communicated to the community, that neither of the bids from either vendor included leaving the dumpsters where they were.
Yeah, point of clarification on that, because my understanding was Lake Shore revised her bid, and they would take over where they were at, and take over the monitoring at their current locations.
But I don't know what that additional cost was.
So, the, the bid had one or two, and they were broken out per site. So, what we did is, we took the three away, and then we asked for the contractor to add back in one at a certain price, and then add back in a second one at a certain price. And so, we were able to see how much those disposal sites were costing us, and the cost was significant. It was eating up that savings that we now are realizing. So, it was that savings that, that was driving that, that cost. The waste management proposal included the landfill and their Simmons Avenue, but the LRS proposal did call for one or two of those sites being managed by them and, and of the certain, of the current locations.
But that was, if I understand correctly, though, that was after the original bids. Those were part of the secondary negotiations, or were those in the original?
No, those were line items in the original bid.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. Appreciate that.
I would add, Alderman Fanouken, that we have had some telephone calls from multifamily residential owners that are upset about not having the yard waste dumpsters, and those dumpsters were not intended for large residential developments. They were intended for single residential. And we are providing that service at the curb. It's, it's just that residents will have to use a container or bundle their, their yard waste. So, that service is still there, but they can't take it to the yard, to the, to the dump sites. And what we, what we've seen is that there was an abuse, that citywide, there was an abuse on all three of those sites.
Yeah. Alderman Fagan?
I've got a couple of things here. First of all, yeah, they were overused, but they were more abused than anything, and I witnessed it myself. And you're absolutely right, there are commercial people that, that use that property thinking that it was open to anybody. I'm not talking about landscapers alone, I'm talking about people that owned apartment buildings or what have you.
Some from out of town.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And the other thing is, you know, I've had a couple, you know, since I've been out of the council, this is the biggest issue that's come up. But, you know, people say, well, I've got to go out and buy bags for this now and bag it up and everything. Now, my understanding is, and when I talk to several, you know, when I'm reading everything, you can ask for another container. And you can tape a Y on it for yard waste and put it right out there. And the whole idea of putting those containers out there to save the refuge company money, they still came by your house every day, every Friday, by my house every Friday, to look for lawn refuge and pick it up, and they are still doing that curb service. I'd rather have the curb service myself than drop it off, but I have used that before.
Alderman Jacobson?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
That's right. This is probably, yeah, that's okay. I paused for a moment. That's all right.
You have to draw breath.
Yeah. I've got more breath now. I can keep going. So then the other thing is, you know, in the survey, I know this is going to hit people not the right way, but in the survey, when you had asked on the money that's saved and putting back into the streets, what was the percentage on that?
It was 65 to 68, either strongly or very strongly or strongly agreed.
So, you know, it's not going to go over well, but I'd rather see it go to $2 than $1 and give the money back. I mean, we're going to have to get this money from somewhere. Yes, the previous councils have diverted money. It's not right. It's not right what they did. I don't condone that. I've never, I don't think I've ever voted for anything to divert money before. But, I mean, a dollar, an extra dollar, $2, and then giving back the $1.63, that's where we're at the percentage. And I would like to make a motion, if it would go, to actually bring it to $2 instead of the $1.
Okay, so you're amending the motion?
Yes.
To $2. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded that we amend this motion to include $2,000... $2,000, $2 per customer for a street maintenance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Alderman Jacobson?
I know the question has come up again by several dozen people. And again, I think some of it is misinformation. Some people have been told that there is no landscape waste and they're just going to have to figure out what to do with it. Again, there are options out there. And I think we've been pretty clear. I've seen a lot of the marketing, both paid and the city unpaid marketing, trying to educate the customer and saying, you know, the curbside art isn't going to change. Again, I was a regular user of the waste sites myself when I owned the house. And it's unfortunate to see it go. But again, I think it's important to reiterate that that was a cost decision that was made totally separate of the waste hauler decision. It had nothing to do with either waste management or LRS or in the other bid. The reality was, it was costing hundreds of thousands of dollars. And while, again, several of us did use it, a lot of the calls I've gotten, one was from a restaurant owner, one from was a business owner in Genoa that regularly... He told me how often he used them. One was an apartment building owner. Two were fraternity house owners. One was, actually, no, two were landscapers, saying how much it was going to cost them and they were going to have to raise their customers' rates because they weren't getting free dumping anymore. Again, I have been amused by some of those conversations, but I think that it's important, again, to get that, those realities out there. A question that came up this week that I didn't have an answer to, so I'll take the opportunity now. Does the dump take it at the dump if you bring up landscape waste? I mean, I realize it's probably at a charge, but they do accept it at the dumpster, correct?
Yes. Yes, they do, at the landfill.
At the landfill. So again, if you have very large quantities of things and you want the convenience of not having to bag it or not having to put it in 32-gallon containers or whatever those... The reality is of the free service that's included with your service, you do still have an outlet. You can drive up and pay for it at the dump. And again, from that reality, A, you would have been paying for it anyway in your monthly garbage can, whether you used it or not. And B, now you're not forcing all of your neighbors to pay for your landscaping waste for your convenience because you didn't want to bag it up. So again, I think that's a much more fair system. If you want the convenience, it is still available at a cost, probably about the same cost as you would have paid anyway. So if you are one of those users, like I am and like it will be affecting me, that you want to continue that convenience, that opportunity is there for you. It's a slightly longer drive, admittedly, but that convenience factor is still there for you at about the same cost.
Do we know whether Lake Shore is going to use the DeKalb landfill? Do we know that yet?
Yes, they're under contract.
Huh?
Yes, they're under contract.
They are going to use that?
For at least two to three years.
Lake Shore?
Yes.
Okay. I did... But that's why I asked the question. Alderman Fager?
Just to add on, Alderman Jacobson, I think that also was under the bid for waste management is they weren't going to have any... In the city, their first choice was you had to go out to the dump, I believe, correct? So that was...
I think Simmons was also in there, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think their first, I thought their first, I think their first choice was to go...
Was the dump.
At the dump.
Correct.
Yep. Personally, I'm fine with paying $2 a month to improve our roads. I don't know if everybody else is.
Alderman Verbic?
I'm in favor of returning the money to the customers. The reason for that is that, you know, we've mentioned restructuring city operations. I don't think they're quite there yet. I think we need to reach the point of how we have a sustainable city operation first and then look at where some of these additional funding sources could be. But I think in this case, certainly I understand where my colleagues are coming from, but certainly it's going to be difficult to quickly make up the lack of investment in streets in the past where we really need to sit down and figure out a plan that we can afford over the long term first.
Alderman Noriko?
When we last discussed this, I had been in favor of the $2 and that seemed to go by the wayside and we ended up with one. But now that the $2 is back under discussion, my points still stand that street maintenance is one of the issues I hear about most frequently. That, you know, having it as part of the refuse, the waste hauling bill, you know, makes it clear to people that we're all sharing in this. We may not all drive cars, but realistically, in this city, in this economy, most of us do or use public transportation, which also, you know, it takes a toll on streets. And how it was handled in the past may not have been the best way. But I'm only responsible for now. And I think we need to do something with the streets. So I would vote in favor of the $2.
Alderman Jacobson?
Again, I think that's the biggest reason why I don't think it's fair. When you understand that the homeowners of 9,000 homes are, again, in terms of our entire population, when you look at the students, when you look at the apartment building owners, when you look at the rentals, when you look at the businesses, most specifically the downtown businesses, none of them will be paying this effective tax. This is a homeowner tax. That's really all we're getting out of this at this point. And I don't think it's fair, if we are going to discuss, hey, how do we start splitting up these responsibilities that we have? And roads are certainly, if not at the top of that list, very close to it. How do we do it in a fair manner, just like we did when we discussed the police station and increasing? The reason it was done through the police station, and I know it's very confusing to some people, how gas was tied, was to try to balance that cost, not just to the residents, but also to students and out-of-towners that are visiting the community, clearly even long enough to fill their tanks, and balance that need for police services that went beyond just residents, went beyond just tenants or owners, but to visitors in the community too, to balance that out across the board. The lockbox obviously changed that, but in reality, it was a revenue swap with MFT. It was money in, money out. It was the same money. It's still going to pay the same costs effectively. In this case, a $2 tax on just the residential waste hauling is already, is directed directly at the homeowner, who is already paying one of our highest tax rates to be here in terms of property taxes. And being a homeowner, they pay significant sales tax and significant other taxes year round. Where some of our other stakeholders, the students or visitors or other people, are not paying that tax year round. I just don't think it's fair to add yet another tax to the burden of the people bearing the brunt of our taxes anyway, and that's why I'll be voting no.
Okay. I don't want to get this, I don't want this to get away from me. So basically, now we have a motion on the floor to amend the motion to provide a $2 per customer per month fee to be given to street maintenance. So we're voting on the $2 fee. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fager?
No.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouken?
No.
Markwart?
No.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, now let's go back to the original motion, which is a $1 per customer per month fee to be given to streets for street maintenance. Any further discussion before we move along? Yes, Alderman Fanouken?
One more question, if I may. I know early on in our discussions about if there was going to be a fee or not, I know Alderman Jacobson and I would both prefer that this be separately identified on that utility bill that we get each month, so I'm hoping that can be accomplished.
Yeah, I'm sure that it can.
Okay.
Explain that to me, Bill.
Well, right now, when you get your utility bill, it's broken out for garbage, sewer, water.
Yes, uh-huh.
And then this would be, we'd want to have this separately broken out too as a $1 collection.
If this were to pass, right.
Yes, if this were to pass.
Alderman Jacobson?
I guess my question is, in addition, because I completely agree, if it's done, that's the only way to do it transparently and fairly. What guarantee and mechanism do we have to ensure that this money gets spent on roads? I mean, I think that's another very valid question in saying, you know, we did something with the police department. And again, I understand fully how it was done, where some don't, some, even that do, don't feel it's right. But how do we guarantee, without any doubt and without any ability to change it later, that this doesn't go toward operations or go toward overhead or other non-budgeted items?
From a legal perspective, even as a home rule community, the city is still subject to certain restrictions applicable to garbage franchise agreements. So any funds that are derived from that franchise agreement are required to be utilized for purposes that are directly related to that agreement. In this case, because there's a relationship between the activities of the garbage truck and the impact on the streets, which exceeds the cost that's been identified here, that's a causal relationship. In terms of how that would apply prospectively, unless the state law is amended, any funds that are derived here, there'd have to be a justification for how the expenditure that they're used towards relates to as in furtherance of the garbage franchise agreement.
Again, in fairness of the questions that are asked tonight, what if we decide we need some more street lighting? And clearly, that's a... And it's an example, not necessarily that issue, but some issue that we can have a loose causal relationship and say, well, this is a new thing we need and we need to take that money. I want to know how we prevent that and guarantee it stays in transportation.
So I think as we work through examples, it would be difficult to come up with a justification for many different expenditures that the council may consider. The use of the funds is somewhat restricted in terms of what could legitimately be justified under the state statute, which includes the home rule limit. In terms of the underlying question about how does this council restrict the actions of future councils, there's really not many effective mechanisms to do that in terms of something like this that is not a part of a long-term agreement or a long-term financial obligation that the city is issued. The case law on such things, for example, this council said it can only be spent on this purpose and it requires a supermajority vote to amend it. The case law is very clear that requirement of a supermajority vote could be amended out with a majority vote. The ability of a current council to restrict the activities of a future council by law are intentionally somewhat restricted.
Allow me to muddy the water even further. Since this would go into effect in 2019, January 1st, we could, could we not, if this were approved tonight, the $1, the $107,000 total figure, we could designate that for a specific purpose or a specific project. Or we could say, we want $107,000 used only for pothole filling. I mean, that would, that would make it specific. So much like putting it on the bill for $1, we'd say, we're going to spend this $107,000 to repair curbs along Lincoln Highway. I'm just using that as an example. Does that make sense? I mean, it would certainly say to our public, if in fact we feel that the dollar per customer per month makes sense, what, where that money would be spent, as opposed to just throwing it into street maintenance, generically.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up question with the council, please. Dean, would not the transportation lockbox amendment come into play here since we're designating it for roads and transportation? Wouldn't that guarantee that it should go there?
I would have to go back and look at that to give you a definitive answer, but off the top of my head, I don't think it would apply to these funds. I can't see how the definitions in that would apply to a portion of garbage franchise fees. So giving you a different example, if the city council said we need to provide for additional... We have parts of the city that have refues in them. We need to provide for additional roll-off dumpsters the city's going to pay for. That would likely be a cost that could be justified as being causally related to a garbage franchise agreement, a garbage hauling agreement. Wouldn't necessarily be transportation restricted. So I don't believe the lockbox amendment would restrict the city just to spending these funds on transportation. It would have to be causally related to the refuse.
The motion on the floor is to authorize a $1 per customer per month fee on the residential refuse, recycling, and yard waste collection rate for the period January 2019 through December 31, 2022, as proposed. Alderman Markwart?
I'm still going to vote no because we're not technically designating it to any place and there's no mechanism to do it. And I'm already paying a 9% tax on my refuge anyways. I, if we're going to take the savings, and I think most people answered the survey, figured that savings was to the city and the city's portion was what should go to the streets, not necessarily their portion. Because if you ask anybody where they want their portion to go, they would want it to go into their pocket. And right now, they're going to have to spend that on landscape waste bags because you're not going to jam-pack all your leaves into one of those dumpsters. You're going to have to put it in bags. Or it's going to blow all over the place. So you're going to spend it on that anyways. So I don't see where we're going to be able to additionally tax the homeowners on this part for another dollar. It's, I just can't do it.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Jacobson?
Just to be clear...
Just to be clear, and again, we heard the library suddenly come up with new legal mumbo jumbo tonight for why they're able to change the rules at the last second. Again, my understanding is, this wouldn't be part of the franchising agreement. This would be a separate fee and to the bills, which would be general fund eligible, which is, again, it could be spent on anything, much like the administration fee is now, correct? Well, will I appreciate that it's going on, the garbage bill, it's also the water bill, and the sanitary bill. If it's broken out as a dollar fee on the bill, it doesn't relate to the franchise agreement. It's a fee that we are charging to the residents that will go to the general fund, correct?
Well, I understand your question. As we looked at what the authority the city has to implement a fee of this nature is, we haven't researched, can the city just implement a head tax, or a household tax to charge each property x number of dollars to implement a fee for road maintenance, or for any other purpose? We haven't looked at, and I'm not aware of, the ability to do that on kind of the broader scale that you're suggesting. What we looked at narrowly, the question that was presented was, with regard to the refuse franchise agreement, does the city have the ability to impose a fee to recoup a portion of the costs of road maintenance that accrue by virtue of the garbage trucks operating? That's the narrow question that we looked to answer. The city does have that ability, provided that the funds raised are used for purposes that, again, narrowly relate to the refuse hauling. With regard to the broader question, could this be used for any general fund expenditure? No. This, as it is configured, as this resolution is drafted, it could not be used for any general purpose expenditure. It would have to be related to refuse hauling. Can the city implement other fees that would be general purpose-related? Certainly, but we haven't looked at, and I don't think there's any recommendation to look at some sort of household fee that's not narrowly related to the franchise.
Oh, I'm certainly not recommending that. I'm just ensuring. I mean, how do we bill for the overhead now, for the administration overhead? That's effectively what we're doing, is we're adding an extra portion to the franchise agreement, correct?
We are, yes, we're adding an extra fee on the, it'd be on the refuse bill, and that fee relates to the refuse hauling.
Which goes where, is my question. It goes into the general fund. And we're reimbursing ourselves for the expense of, of overhead, correct?
So, the administration, the 9% charge that's added to the refuse bill currently, which would continue in the new contract, is going back to the general fund for covering the staff support services that are provided by the city to, you know, implement that contract, and the other services that are provided around the refuse contract. This funding source will not be going into the general fund at any point in time. So, when it comes in, we'll identify as a separate fee on the bill, and that will go into the street, the capital fund. So, I'm not going to have it go into the general fund, transfer out. So, you're eliminating a portion of that, I guess, threat to the funding source, because we never put it into the general fund to begin with. So, that's kind of one thing we're doing on our side, let alone the language. Dean was very specific in working with Public Works on how to craft the language for this resolution, to make it, I guess, as airtight as possible, for this funding to only go to street maintenance related to the impact that the refuse contract has on the roads. It's probably more detailed than you've seen with some other of our resolutions when it comes to that. So, we're trying to get as, to your point, as narrowly focused as we can with this funding source, that it will go to street maintenance, and not be diverted to the general fund. Because we've covered general fund operating sources in the refuse contract already through an administration fee.
Any further discussion on this? We have a motion on the floor. Roll call.
No.
Yes.
Markwart?
No.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Favor?
No.
Motion fails.
Excuse me, I forgot one thing when we were talking about this. There is a difference between a homeowner that lives in DeKalb, and a difference in a rent that lives in DeKalb. Both of them are getting their trash hauled by these undoubtedly heavy trucks down the streets. What we're talking about then would be violation of the Constitution of the United States. Article 1, paragraph 8, section 8, paragraph 1. All taxes and levies will be equal. I don't want to be paying for somebody to get a free ride, and you don't want anybody to get a ticket to get a free ride. Some, although, you're going to have to get some money back in the expense of taking care of the streets. You robbed them over the years, not you necessarily, but the same people that were sitting up here 20 years ago, or whatever.
John?
Yeah. I know.
John, we've said, we've kicked the can down the road too, too many years. I understand. I understand. Okay. Thank you. That motion failed, so we move forward to number seven. Resolution 2018-105, authorizing an engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman for design engineering for 3,800 feet of water main, in an amount not to exceed $97,670. Motion.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. I and our Assistant Public Works Director, Brian Favor, will address this subject.
Thank you, Mayor. The design work for Joanne Lane, and Islandwood, and Gulfview, we'd like to begin that work now. This is actually a 2019 project. This is also tied with the IEPa loan that we are in the process of applying for, and have received notification that we, in all likelihood, will get that loan. That's a $1.7 million loan. The design work, in order to use that, that loan, for that to be available to us, we have to do the design work now, because construction has to begin by March 31st. And so, doing the design work now, we should be able to go out for a bid by December or January, bid opening sometime in February, and hopefully have some work begun by March 31st. And the engine in work can be rolled into that loan, both design and construction engineering, if we so choose. Upon approval of the loan, any expenses that we had up until that point would be reimbursed, so to speak, or at least applied to the loan. I shouldn't really say reimbursed, but applied to the loan. Joanne Lane, Islandwood, and Gulfview, especially Joanne Lane, is probably the worst main we have in, in the town. It's been a, a issue for us for at least the past 10 to 15 years, where it's just main break after main break after main break, and we're running out of clamps, really. And Islandwood, we've had a number of problems on that main as well. Gulfview is in, in as bad a condition, but it was installed in the same year as the other two mains, and it has started to show signs of breakage as well. So, our idea is to replace all that water main next year. Obviously, that would be something that council would have to approve as part of the FY19 budget. But in order for us to even do that, we would have to begin that work immediately, really, the design work, I'm saying, to get that, to get that work done, and I'll forbid, by early spring. I did have Zach Gill, our new engineer, city engineer, review the proposal by Baxter and Woodman. I believe Zach feels that it's a fair proposal, and in line with the expected cost of doing the design work for them. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
So, is this part and parcel of the loan that we've already, as a council, approved?
Yeah, and you actually haven't approved the loan. We have approved, you have approved that you are willing to take on debt. And so, the loan itself has not been offered to the city. That would have to be brought before council and formal approval. Essentially, for us to, to apply for a loan, staff cannot apply for the loan, council has to apply for the loan, because council is the governing body. And so, essentially, what we had talked about, maybe a month or a month and a half ago, at a prior meeting, and the ordinance that you had approved, was essentially just allowing the EPA know that we are willing, that you are applying for the loan. It wasn't staff applying, it was the council that was applying for the loan. But the loan has not actually been offered yet, and council has not approved the loan. So, we would still have the option, even if we do, do the design work now, come FY19, that fiscal year, and if we go out for bid for this project, if you so choose not to accept the loan, and we want to do this with cash, or we want to do a reduced, reduced project, that's still, those are still options available to council. So, but the design work and construction would have to begin by March 31st to use the loan. If we weren't going to use the loan, construction could begin...
So, is this in the workup for 2019 budget?
It would be part of FY19, yeah. The construction costs and engineering, construction and engineering would be part of that. The only issue is, the design work has to be done this fiscal year, so it's part of this, this year's budget.
Zach, do you have any further comments, or are you just simply there for consultative questions, et cetera? This is Zach Gill. He is our, sort of new on the job, you're, what, in your second week now here with us, from Fairgram?
Correct.
And great to see you, and around. And so, now, with those comments, any questions? Any comments? Going to leave you off, we're going to let you off easy tonight, Zach. Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Brian. Zach, thank you. Resolution 2018-106, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and execution of an agreement with Lane Christiansen Company for a repair to well number 11, in an amount not to exceed $85,000. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. With further discussion, once again, Brian Favor.
Thank you again, Mayor. Well 11 is one of nine wells that the city owns and operates. Well 11 is the most productive well we have. In other words, it pumps the most gallons per minute out of all the wells, providing about 20% of our daily water supply. The well has shown a dramatic decrease in pumping capacity, from about 1,350 gallons per minute to about 950 gallons per minute, over a relatively short period of time, so about a 30% decrease over just a couple months. This is very indicative of a hole, or holes having developed in the column pipe. So, as the well is pumping, it's, the water's actually going out the column pipe before it actually surfaces. Because of this development, we elected to take that well out of service. It's been out of service for the past month or so. Not a major issue this time of year, surprisingly, seeing as it's summertime. The other wells that we have, the other wells can make up the difference of that well, but it does put additional demand on our well, our other wells. But if we were to lose another well, or a treatment plant, it would become very critical to have this well out of service, you know, our largest well. In addition, NIU is returning in the next couple months, or a couple weeks, and so, that's going to place a serious demand on our, on our system. We had another 15,000, 20,000 residents to the city, so our pumping capacity goes way up, or pumping demand goes way up with the return of the students. So, it becomes much more critical in the next couple, couple weeks to have this well back in service. We contacted Lane Christiansen Company. They're a well drilling company that has worked on our wells for, for many years, primarily because of their specialty and Byron Jackson Motors, which is what we have in our deep wells. There's special crane that's required with those motors. They also have a facility in Aurora, a large facility, where they can work on pumps, rebuild pumps, and have pipe in stock, and that type of thing. So, they're very close to us, and do a superb job. We reached out to them, and they gave us a base quote of $30,000 to pull the well, and to put the well back in service, or back in the ground, I should say. But that doesn't include any of the repair costs, and obviously, you don't know the repair costs until such time as the well is pulled. So, the base cost of this would be $30,000. That's to pull the well and put the well back in place. In all likelihood, because the wells and the pump have been in the ground for 12 years, the pump itself is going to need to be rebuilt. It's almost standard practice after, after 12 years, that there'll be wear on the, the pump. And that, to rebuild the pump, is probably 14,000 to 18,000. A new pump is 28,000, you know, if it can't be rebuilt. All that being said, we have a pump in stock. We keep one in inventory. We keep a motor in inventory. We keep column piping, along with the check valve in inventory. All that's stored at one of our water towers. So, our goal here would be to pull the well. Lane has already informed me that they could be here this week still, potentially by Thursday. We would pull the well, or have them pull the well if this is approved, take our inventory, and use that to get the, the well back in service as soon as possible, and then potentially rebuild the pump, purchase a new pump, you know, restock our piping. Those things that are used out of our inventory, we would like to place back in our inventory for emergency purposes, purposes such as this. Otherwise, you're talking about weeks before you get the, the well back in service. So, I think that, that pretty much covers everything I had to say, so.
Okay. Alderman Markwart?
If the cost is low enough, would you still then do one of the routine inspections of the other wells? I see well 10 and 13 were scheduled.
Yeah. Yeah, the intent was to pull well 10 and 13 for routine maintenance this year, and well 11, I believe, was on the calendar for next year, in our capital plan for next year. And I think I'd budget $130,000 for those two wells. So, yeah, potentially, depending on what the cost of this well is, if it's 60,000, 65,000, which is what the last well that we had pulled was $65,000, so that's a pretty good estimate of, of what it would cost to pull a well, and do the necessary repairs, and put it back in service. With this one here, we're not sure what the issue is. If there's multiple column, columns of pipe that need to be repaired, that's why we're requesting, you know, additional funds for this. But to answer your question, yes, that would definitely be an option, and one I'd like to pursue potentially. Otherwise, you know, with all likelihood, would have to budget that, those two wells for next year.
Any further questions? We have a motion to waive competitive bidding, authorizing an agreement with Lane in the, for the repair of well number 11, in an amount not to exceed $85,000. Roll call.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Number nine. Resolution 2018-107, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation on behalf of the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study for Metropolitan Planning Organization funding from July 1, 2018, through December 31, 2019, in an amount not to exceed $274,095. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Speaking to this item is transportation planner, Brian Dixon. Brian?
Yes. Each year, DSATs, our Metropolitan Planning Organization for the DeKalb area, receives federal and state grant funds for the operations of the MPO, which includes payment for staff, implementation of projects, and indirect costs for the city of DeKalb to manage this grant. And we are moving forward, we have received our contract with IDOT for funding for... And we are moving forward, we have received our contract with IDOT for funding for state fiscal year 2019. As mentioned, this grant runs from July 1st of this year until December 31, 2019. It's usually for a year, but they've decided in order to ensure that all MPOs in Illinois have sufficient time to expend all the funds, they've extended it for six months. So we are seeking approval for the, of the resolution to allow the mayor to sign this intergovernment agreement so the city can seek reimbursement of its cost for operating the MPO.
Any questions or comments on this? Roll call.
Fagan? Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Mark Part?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Number 10, resolution 2018-108 authorizing the Finance Department to provide payment on transit services provided by Voluntary Action Center of DeKalb County from May 1, 2018 through September 30, 2018 via the General Fund in lieu of delayed downstate, delayed downstate operating assistance program grant funding to ensure uninterrupted public transit service until the grant funds are received in an amount not to exceed $800,000. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Brian Dixon, once again, explain this.
Um, yes, as we have mentioned in the past, the state of Illinois has implemented a new government and accountability and transparency act, which is meant to win, the state is providing grants to cities and transit providers, greater access or transparency in those grants. One of the effects of this is there has been implemented several more layers of oversight and accountability, submitting of forms and, and whatnot in order to receive our grant reimbursements. What we have encountered this year is they, we are required not to request full funding in previous quarters, and we have to submit a final request at the end of the year, and which is paid once we submit our final actual tolls. What happened this year is, in the past, we have submitted this to IDOT staff and they approved it, sent it to the controller, and it was approved. This year, we had a few individual line items where we had underestimated on our budget last year, and it was decided by the GATA board that we now must submit a request for a line item extension, which we were not anticipating because it had not been previous practice. And we will be changing that in the future. But because of this, we have submitted for our final reimbursement to pay VAC for their transit services in March, or in May and June. But because we have to go through this additional process, we, it's probably going to take another month or two before we get actual reimbursement, which VAC has already expended those funds, and they're finding it difficult to move forward paying payroll and stuff without some kind of reimbursement. And then the, the city would just use, once it is reimbursed, those funds, it would just be returned to the general fund. In addition, our state fiscal year 19 dope grant, because of all the additional paperwork for this year, the IDOT staff has not even been able to get to the point to writing up the contract for state fiscal year 2019. So, and will likely be two to three more months before we get that agreement and bring that before city council so we can seek reimbursement for, from July 1st through September or October. So in addition to repayment of these two invoices, we're seeking for a little additional buffer as if things are critical with VAC to allow additional payments not to exceed 800,000. The city will get reimbursed, but we're trying to even out so that there isn't such a huge gap in repayments to VAC. And so we are seeking approval to pay VAC for the, the services when they submit their invoice, and then the city will be reimbursed through our grant, and then the, the city will just reimburse the general fund when it is received.
This sounds like bureaucracy at its finest.
Yes, but we have-
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Alderman Markport, you're shaking your head.
No, it's just sometimes you wish you could tell them to whatever.
Yes, okay. Alderman Noriko.
Didn't we do something like this last year?
Right, we did go through this process last year where there was a delay in receiving funding from the state.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So in that case, it was actually a fairly sharp turnaround between when we loaned the funding basically to VAC and then when we received the funding back from the state. This could potentially be a longer period of time. The general fund does have funding in reserves. The real loss besides, you know, there's the, I guess there's always the threat that the state won't reimburse us, but they've been pretty consistent with this grant funding and stable with this grant funding. But the real loss is we would be out some interest earned, but you know, the interest earned right now isn't very high, so it's a minimal amount at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fagan?
But we're still losing out on interest. I mean, there's still money that we're losing out on. Why is it that the city of DeKalb is the one that always lends the money? I mean, I know VAC goes into other councils other than DeKalb.
In this case, I believe it's because we're the authorized transportation-
We're the fiscal agent.
Agent for the grant, and you have to meet certain criteria for the grant funding to be issued, and then we issued a VAC because we meet that criteria as a city.
And so if we don't pass this, would VAC have to go to a bank?
If I can step in on that one, so VAC does have an operating line of credit with a local bank, and they use that as their primary funding source when they run into short-term delinquencies from the state. That's something that came to council some time ago, and we authorize them to undertake that, and it's a line the city does not have any liability on.
Right.
It is when they are coming to the point of potentially exhausting that or running out of their commercial lending financial resources that they bring this forward. And it's only in terms of these really long-term delays in the state providing payments that this becomes an issue.
I guess that my question to you is then they're, they're running out of money on their line of credit?
Yes, they've expended their line of credit funding.
Do you feel used and abused, Alderman Fagan?
Uh, give me another. One more resolution I've done.
Alderman Verbic?
I am growing tired of us being asked to be a bank. And, and on top of it all, trust the state of Illinois with $800,000, really? I sense that operations may be stressing your fiscal abilities, so I would ask that if there's any way to be more fiscally responsible, to stop pushing the envelope, that would be my preference.
Any further comments? We're being authen, we're, we're being asked to approve this resolution. Roll call. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mike.
Is there any way to pay the VAC invoices? 800,000 is very hard to justify. Could we just pay the VAC invoices and then come back to council for additional funds?
We could. What we're looking for right now is to pay the existing VAC invoices and look at the future as we move forward, that, we would not pay in advance anything. It would only be after the funds are expended, finance, they'll submit a request, finance would look at their cash flow line. I have reached out to IDOT and their staff to inquire about interest, if the city itself can charge interest, or if it has to go through a banking establishment, and I'm still awaiting the answer on that.
Well, also in, in, in the options that we were given tonight, although I realize the recommendation is that we approve the resolution, but we, if you look at number three under the background material, approve the resolution but instruct staff to put restrictions on the amount of funds that can be allocated from the general fund until the city receives its requested grant funds. Is that something you could live with?
Yes.
Could VAC live with it?
Um, they're probably, that, that we're going to be having an outstanding invoice in July very soon. We can talk to Allen A., but we are running into, we're right in the middle of some of our public transit changes and-
Yeah, I under-
Mayor.
Yeah, I hear you. Uh, yes.
I'd like to interject. I think what Alderman Verbic was asking is if we paid the two invoices that were outstanding and identified in the report, so those two invoices are just short of $380,000. So you could make an amendment to the motion that we pay those two invoices, but then we would come back to council if there's further delay in the funding that we're receiving from the state.
Alderman Verbic?
I would be happy to amend the motion as such to accomplish paying those invoices at the amount indicated and come back to council for any further consideration.
Do I have an second to that amendment? Second. It's been amended then, that, that this resolution then would cost us about 380 as opposed to 800. That does not guarantee that we will not be asked again-
Correct.
-somewhere down the pike. Any further comments? Alderman Markport?
So basically, the amendment is limiting the initial payment right now of the 378, 378,000. Next month, you're going to come for the July 1, and so we're going to do probably 186 or 192 at that time, and then the next month, we're going to come back and do this, where the, up to 8,000 just gives the, that rollover ability, and we're not saying we're spending 800,000. That just carries through the six so that we're not coming back. So essentially, you're wanting them to come back each month and go through this process in order to make this pay.
Alderman Fagan?
But that also gives us checks and balances too. I mean, things can change for the next month and following month. But I think Alderman Verbic's saying is saying, look, we don't want to give out a line of credit here, what we're trying to do is pay their bills.
Well, it's our bill, right?
Right, because we receive the grant funding, we, and have a contract with VAC, and that we owe the funding to VAC, they've spent that, where the delay is, is in the grant funding coming from the state to the city for us. Usually, it's just a straight pass-through where we don't have to essentially borrow from our cash.
Correct.
Right.
Right, so it's our money. It's, it's what-
It is our money.
It is owed that comes passed through from a grant.
What the money we're giving now is our money, it's not the money that we're passing through from a grant.
So to provide a more specific answer, our agreement with VAC indicates that we reimburse some on an as-received basis, so when we get funding, we reimburse that. If the council authorizes the expenditure up to $380,000, we'll be getting their invoices current, but unless it's different direction from council, VAC would not stop operating. So we return back in a month, as you indicated, with another request for funding. Our obligation to VAC is just to fund that are actually received, and this is extending them additional funding beyond what's actually received.
We have a motion on the floor, which is an amendment, which simply says that we approve the authorization of 378,000, et cetera, and small change, given the understanding that we may have a similar request at another subsequent meeting. Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
No.
Mark Part?
No.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, are you satisfied with that, Brian? I didn't, I, maybe that's not a bad word choice, satisfied, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, now, we still have to vote on the original motion as amended.
Ah, okay. The original motion is to do the full vote, up to 800,000?
Well, as amended, it's 378 and change.
As amended, 378. Oh, that's right, we approved the amendment, okay. Now, so the, but the amount on the table is 378, right?
378, 642, 35.
Right. We had a motion on the floor, second. Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Mark Part?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you for keeping me in line. Number 11, resolution 2018-109 authorizing an agreement to proceed with a proof of concept agreement with Digital Lobby Media LLC for 60 days as it pertains to downtown wireless internet service, and authorizing a waiver of bid and approval of purchase of certain equipment from VAC Incorporated, that's V-A-C-K Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Speaking to this is our information technology director, Mark Thorson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and the community. Tonight, I'm presenting a request for, for authorizing an agreement to proceed with a proof of concept with Digital Lobby Media for 60 days as it pertains to downtown wireless, and also authorizing a request to waive bids and purchase equipment and services from VAC Inc. as regards to installing that equipment. The, as you may recall, this should sound familiar, back in September of 2017, staff brought before the council as a committee of the whole item, a, an idea for consideration to work with Digital Lobby with regards to providing a complimentary internet service to the public in the downtown area. Additionally, later that evening, we had a regular council item to do, to approve a, an intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University to provide a foundational Wi-Fi product that Digital Lobby could then build upon should we move- Wi-Fi product that Digital Lobby could then build upon should we move forward with that. Over time, as we were working towards that goal, we ran into significant challenges with this project. The most substantial challenge that we ran into was over, when the weather turned and the ground started freezing, we started experiencing issues with the fiber optic cable that we were intending to use for this project. This hadn't happened before. I've talked to numerous people involved with this, and they said that there was no indication of this happening before. At one point, we were, we had intermittent services for city services as well as a point when one of the strands of cable broke. So it was physically damaged by the ice buildup as part of this. The shift, the focus shifted to repairing this cable or figuring out what our options were to move forward. Working in collaboration with Northern Illinois University, we were able to establish through their engineering as well as an external engineer that in fact, this cable has to be replaced. As we were working, the Wi-Fi project itself stalled. We weren't able to really make a whole lot of progress on that as we were working on more important issues. But I was able to reach out to one of the external engineers involved to find out what alternatives we might have to be able to move this project forward. After a site survey and working through some options, they came back with a proposal that not only would provide the majority of what we were considering with that initial process, but would also be able to turn it around fast enough that we would be able to start providing this service for Corn Fest. So that was a really exciting development that we were, that we really wanted to pursue and look into. Sorry, I apologize, I lost my place here. So we brought this to Northern Illinois University as well to review. And we were able to work together to build this agenda item for tonight. So let me fast forward to now, where we have this agree, this proposed agreement with VAC to be able to provide Internet in the downtown. And it would be 11 access points as outlined in this area, which is ideally targeted to the Corn Fest festival that we would want to be able to provide the service for. During that time, we reached out to Digital Lobby as well to talk about what options we might have with that. To be able to provide an entire master service agreement and a site agreement to council with such a quick turnaround would be extremely difficult. So what Digital Lobby offered is a initial stage proof-of-concept. Give the opportunity for the city to be able to see what this platform can provide. And that's what's outlined in this agreement for 60 days that starts just before Corn Fest. And with that, we would be able to focus on this. The process to replace and repair that cable still goes on, and we're still working with NIU, and we actually have some ideas that we hope to bring before council. This also shifts the original IGA with NIU. Originally, NIU and their engineering staff would do the engineering specs, the procurement, and then the city would reimburse up to the authorized limit as per that IGA, which was $30,000. In fact, with this agreement, with this model, the city would be procuring all of the equipment and paying the engineering fees for the installation. Now, NIU has agreed and pledged to offset this cost to the city by about $14,000. We're working, in fact, I just received a modified IGA that I'm going to be presenting to council soon, that's going to cover how that shift occurred and then authorize the ability for them to cut us a check for that offset amount. So we're still staying within the parameters that the council has approved previously. And also, our cost will be roughly about $16,000 once everything is said and done. With Digital Lobby's participation in this, we'll be able to provide a proof-of-concept, a login page that the public would be able, that the public would see. They would have the option to either log in using their email address or log in using Facebook. They would then go to a sponsor page, which we're working out the details on who would be showing up there. But I think chances are good that would be Northern Illinois University as well as the city of DeKalb and being able to put our messages out there as well. Additionally, Digital Lobby is proposing the idea of putting a separate event page for Corn Fest where the schedule will be available for all the attractions and activities. And the final piece to this is Digital Lobby is looking to work with Community Development and the Chamber of Commerce with the idea of maybe engaging four businesses through this proof-of-concept page and working with, working with them. So we would be able to let you know how that would work as well. I will tell you that the exciting piece from the city's perspective is the ability to start gathering data on what's going on during Corn Fest in that area. And that's really what the power of the Digital Lobby piece is. In addition to total passerby's, unique visitors, we can also get home zip codes so you can start to see what the reach is of the Corn Fest activities, seeing where people are coming from. So we'll be able to have, be able to collect information such as that. I can't stress it enough, it's going to be aggregate, non-identifying information that the city would have access to. So that's a point I would like to bring up. With regards to the proof-of-concept agreement, the city's still working through details. And we're asking that the council authorize us to move forward with finalizing those detailed negotiations and being able to present that back to the mayor for final approval. There's one last page I wanted to show you, and this was within the past couple of days. Government Technology Publication just did an article about Naperville Park District, who is one of the first customers on the municipal side to work with, work with Digital Lobby. And with that, they were able to scope out there and all of their facilities and their Riverwalk area with Wi-Fi access points. And congratulate, would like to congratulate Mr. Omar Sandoval, he's the IT director over there in Akali, and he's worked really hard. And he's been instrumental in providing me as much information as possible to get to work through the details of this type of an agreement. And in addition to that, from a city perspective, this is rather groundbreaking as well because we are pushing this community university ideal and being, and working together with NIU. We want to, this is going to be potentially a model for future cities that would have the same endeavors. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have on this.
Alderman Noriko.
This 30,000, is this a budgeted amount?
In working with community development, the TIF budget was amended to move that money forward from the 2017 fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Fagan.
Want to explain to me again, NIU taking the lead on the finance, and now we're taking the lead on finance?
So the original intergovernmental agreement stated that as part of the initial plan, NIU would conduct the engineering. They would also do all the procurement. So the access points would be assets of Northern Illinois University. That was assuming that the cable was still where it was and was functional. We trusted it. Given the change and given the quick turnaround on this project, it appeared that it would be more, it would be expedited by going with the city having the assets, the city conducting the installation and the process. Just given on the nature of how this changed.
Okay, so I'm trying to hang on here. So we're not using fiber optic right now. This is not fiber optic. But once we go into fiber optic, will this cost us more money when we go into fiber optic? From where you're, what we're planning right now, and then you said eventually we will get the fiber optic in, will that be more money?
There is a potential for that. So this project is entirely wireless-based.
Right.
So there is no fiber optic, as we call back halls, which is the traffic that would be coming back and then through the Internet service provider.
Right.
There's a, there's a limit to the technology as it stands, which is why this was not originally assessed that way. So what we're asking for is to move forward with this entirely Wi-Fi access point under the auspices that this would accommodate the capacity that Corn Fest would provide as well as day-to-day operations.
All right, so you're saying is, let's get this in place and we can get it in there for, in time for Corn Fest?
That's the goal for this process, to provide a good user experience for the people in the downtown area.
Okay, if we don't pass this and wait for the original plan of using fiber optic, it'll still be within our money, but we're almost pushed back a year.
Yes, I, I don't know the exact timetable on...
When you're talking about getting data for Corn Fest, you'll have to wait for the next one.
Well, we do more in the downtown than just Corn Fest.
Right. But I guess my question is then, when do you think that would be?
Let me explain though that the reason that we aren't dismissing the fiber optic connection piece, we still have to repair and replace that cable. We would like to then go back to the original specifications, which we're asking VAC to place these access points where we anticipated to run fiber to them because they're, so the bigger picture for this is that from a smart city perspective, you would like to be able to connect cameras, you'd like to be able to connect sensors, you'd like to be able to connect electric charging stations, whatever the council prefers, we want to build the foundation for that. So what we're doing is asking to move forward with this project to provide public Internet, knowing that we would then want to build up that fiber infrastructure and then build off of this existing platform. So this is not a sunk cost. We intend on using this equipment.
Okay.
But we want to facilitate it so that the bandwidth is there, that we can then bring out even more smart city initiatives.
Well, my feeling is, is, you know, there's been discussed on putting cameras downtown DeKalb, and we would need the fiber optic for that and whatever else we would need. I would rather wait to do the fiber optic than to throw in the wireless Internet just to say we had the wireless Internet, but I'd rather wait.
Mike, could I put you on the spot?
Sure.
I mean, this is your business. What, what, what's your thought here? I mean, what is your thought of this, of this proposal? Does it, does, is, does this make sense to go forward and do this for the benefit of Corn Fest? My primary concern is, are we rushing into something for Corn Fest at the expense of perhaps waiting a little bit and doing this in a manner that we initially had discussed? Is that, is that a, is that a fair, fair assessment? Mike, what do you, what do you think?
Well, and its reach is so much further than Corn Fest, though. So I guess, yeah, I can certainly see the point of trying to get it in before Corn Fest, but the reach is so much further than that. So I will tell you that working at NIU, we're intimately aware of how long things take. So it's hard to really determine, and you know, Mark could maybe better identify how long that kind of process could take. And does that meet the timing of what council's expectations are of deploying wireless downtown? And I would not want to predict how long that process would take to repair fiber, weigh new fiber, and all of the other things related to that, in addition to what could be those additional funding requirements.
And if I may, the Corn Fest piece is important not because we're just providing Wi-Fi. And I think that, I can't overstate the importance of that. It's the gathering of the information, and that's the piece that this will provide. We are not, this is not a cheap alternative. This is not a, let's just do it and Band-Aid. This is a well-thought-out process that took weeks to build. And we would like to be able to provide that in an opportunity where we could get the most bang for our buck. But at the same time, it's the information we can gather out of that that can help us make better decisions, which I think is very critical. And absolutely, it's not just Corn Fest. But this is a 60-day window just on this proof-of-concept, that we would like to be able to provide a more thorough site agreement and master service agreement to present to council to be able to expand on this.
Alderman Fanukin.
Mark, a quick question. So the data that will be collected, will this be only from people who log in, or will it also say if I'm walking downtown and I'm not logging in with anything, but my cellphone is active, will it pick up the fact that cellphone passed through that area?
So I'm actually, Mr. Kevin Niebergall from Digital Lobby is here, and he can provide more insight on the platform on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I'm sorry, I was walking up, so I did not get a question.
No, no, that's okay. My question was, if somebody does not log on to the system, but they pass through the area where this is, will that capture that person's information?
No, all it captures is a MAC address of the device. So it's like a two digits, colon, two digits. We know nothing about the person at all. All that is really, the MAC address is just a device identification piece, okay? And all we're really looking to do with that particular piece is to find out how many passersby came through a zone, where they congregated at, how long they dwelt in the zone, just for city planning purposes.
Right, so then let me do a follow-up to that. And so like, you know, we've been talking about Corn Fest, but now, you know, the Egyptian has a number of events. So like, everybody who went to an event at the Egyptian, those numbers would be recorded by the system, or every device that was at the Egyptian would be recorded as they go in. The Egyptian theater is right downtown here, all right. It's in the area, yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, so again, we're not taking anything personally identifiable. We're just going to track that people walked in front of, remember, it's not going to go in the Egyptian unless we actually put...
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're not going to track people into the Egyptian, but we can track passersby.
The population surrounding, and can make some assumptions that we know there was an event there that night, so we would know. So again, it isn't just for Corn Fest, but it's a 60-day window on what's going on downtown. And I'm going to ask, Joe, do you have any comments that you could help shed some light on this too?
Everything, everything, Joe Tricky from NIU, by the way. But no, just following up with everything Mark and Mike have said. I mean, the fiber optic repair is going to take us some time. NIU processes will take a significant amount of time to do the engineering. And I do think there's a pretty big opportunity here with 60 days of data collection. I do think that's a important opportunity we should realize because it's, NIU sees value to it, and we're willing to fund a portion of that because we, we want to see the data coming off of Corn Fest, that's Student Movement Day, and we want to, you know, be a good partner to the city. So that's all I have from the background.
You know, I think I'd like to, I'm sorry, I think I'd like to address more of the umbrella of the issue of, I think there's, like Mark kept saying, there's a greater scope in process, right? So you've got these, what, 14 or 13 or 14 access points. But we've committed... But we've committed to put 54 access points in all the way down and then NIU wants to, and I had a couple of meetings with them in the last week, wants to put Digital Lobby within all of NIU. So there's, there's a, it's more than just data. It's creating that messaging that goes back and forth between the university and the city, hopefully giving the local businesses traction within, within the university and converse. Now, you know, when Mark came to me and I'm like, we, we need to get a site agreement. And he's like, that's going to be tough. I said, you know what? I'll do it for free. I don't care. I'm committed. I'm sold out to this. And not only will I install DL with them, I'll work with, with the chamber. I'll get some businesses signed up. We'll create a true community, so before one single other access point gets installed, you're going to get a complete purview of what this is really going to look like rolled out. And that's what I'm committed to doing.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for answering the questions. You too, Joe.
Alderman Faver.
I was just going to ask, what is, so the, the proof of concept is 60 days? And then what's the, what's the city's obligation, other than if we choose not to go forward, we're required to pay a $9,000 fee, but what's then the plan? What are we, what are we signing up for after the 60 days proof of concept?
Well, the, this is the, this has been moving very quickly. So we're, we would be assessing and providing options for the council, but the, the obvious intent with this is that in, in the time period that we've had to be able to look through this, we, we haven't found another option that does this to this extent, that, that brings everything together, that brings the university, the city together, brings the businesses and, and provides and sheds light for them and provides them the opportunity to do messaging with, with the community. So, yeah, this, this is a, a thing that we're, we're not finding an equal for at this point.
So are, but are we looking at a subscription service that we're going to be obligated to or we're going to sign up? After 60 days, we're going to move forward, the, the proof of concept is 60 days. What happens after 60 days? We're going to expand the system? Or what are we, what are our plans? Or what's the, what's the hope?
Absolutely. The hope is that we would bring back to the council for review a master site agreement and a, a, I'm sorry, a master services agreement and a site agreement from Digital Lobby. That would, that would essentially put the ball in motion to, to look at what the advertising opportunities are. The city and, and, and Digital Lobby and NIU would then have to start negotiating what sites are available, what messaging options are available. There's a lot of work that would have to be done with that, that we would be pursuing during the, this proof of concept while that's going on. So that we would be able to present that to council. Then we would receive the, the other piece of this, which is like, like Kevin had mentioned, another 50-some access points expanding throughout the downtown and covering even the transition between the university and, and downtown area, that lagoon area would also be part of that as well.
And is, is the city going to be making an investment in equipment for that? Or is that going to be part of allowing Digital Lobby to operate within the city and the university? I'm trying to figure out, is, are we going to be purchasing equipment in 60 days? You're going to come back and say, this was a smashing success, now we want $100,000? Or we're going to sign up for, you know, a $50,000 a year contract with Digital Lobby going forward? I'm, I'm trying to see, we're doing a proof of concept, we're going to get excellent information, we're going to find out how many people are in our downtown, and you're going to come back and say, we want to now do X. What does X cost the city?
Okay. So two answers. One is that, yes, as I stated before, there, there will be, I will be coming back to bring the, the initial phase up to where it was originally planned. Once we're able to resolve the fiber optic cable connection, because we do need that bandwidth to do bigger things than just providing Wi-Fi to the community. The second answer is yes. We will be bringing an agreement back to the council that would explain in a, a three or five-year term, depending on how this works out, to work with Digital Lobby. With that aspect, as, as noted in the article from GCN, that would be at no cost to the city. Digital Lobby would be absorbing the expense to outlay the, the rest of that, that network. Their object is to, their business model is to make money through the advertising piece of it.
Okay.
Yes.
Alderman Verbi.
Any comment at all as to the amount of radiation that emanates from these devices? Should there be any concern about the quantities of devices? Much of that documentation or study is unknown. Do you have any information on that?
I don't have any information outside of information that's publicly available and, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve this resolution. We've exhausted a number of questions. Are we ready to vote?
Alderman Jacobs.
Again, so we get through the proof of concept. And provided things go wrong, what are we out at that point?
So we've-
We, we decide we're not interested in moving forward on whatever the, the follow-up agreement is. What have we spent and what, what are our options at that point?
So with regards to the Digital Lobby, just to clarify your question, the proof of concept agreement with Digital Lobby, so we would be subject to terms of that agreement. However, in discussing with, with Kevin and with City Attorney Frieders, we've been, we were finalizing the language on, on good faith efforts and such. Assuming that we choose not to go with Digital Lobby, these assets are ours. We're purchasing them. We would be able to provide a Wi-Fi platform that does not provide the information that, that Digital Lobby would provide. It wouldn't provide the, the connection with the local, the local community in terms of the businesses. That, that's essentially what you have is, is assets in a, in a configured pattern.
Again, I just don't feel comfortable moving forward with an agreement that we don't know the details of. We're being asked to approve an agreement that we've worked on for months now that we haven't agreed upon any of the contract terms, but approve it, let the mayor make the decision. That's not how we do things effectively, as far as I'm concerned. I appreciate that we're trying to get it done. We have some time still. If you want it, if you want my vote, bring me the full plan and bring it up to a vote. That's the correct way and the proper way that we expect all of our other plans in front of us. So I, I'm not supportive at this point.
If I could, Mr. Niebergall would like to talk a little bit further, but we were talking about some of the fine details in the agreement. And really that was to say that we want to, we're making a good faith effort from the city's perspective. And Digital Lobby acknowledges that. So that was some of the details that we were working out with, with our attorney and, and Digital Lobby's attorney, just to make sure that, that the language was clear on, on the intent. So I'm hopeful that, that would provide some confidence that we are not changing the spirit or the scope of this agreement. We're just looking to iron out some of the details in the language that, that would, that we would then present back to the mayor, so.
So let me say this. Whether, whether, whether we were involved, Digital Lobby, in this project whatsoever. The city of DeKalb was going to install a number of access points along the corridor, whether we were here or not. All we're doing is enhancing that. And the reason that we want to move forward, and Mark brought this idea to me, I'm like, two weeks? Okay. Fine, two weeks. The reason we're committing to this is because this is going to take a while. We have to work through a site agreement, a master service agreement, okay? But there's still no commitment from the city at that point. The city is not committed to anything until they sign a notice to proceed, which is completely vetted out through the city attorneys, through the site agreement. It's all agreed upon by everyone. And what this really is, is it's, it's, don't look at it, this is an opportunity to jumpstart this program. Mark has been super aggressive. He came to me and he's like, hey, can you make this happen? I said, yeah, I'll make it happen. And so look at this as an opportunity to jumpstart this. Otherwise, we're going to be back here at the same time next year and we're going to be talking about this and, and, and time goes by. And so that's all we're looking to do is just take advantage of that opportunity, if that makes sense to you.
Again, when we first started this conversation.
Alderman O'Reilly.
There's this, in the backup, there's this community Wi-Fi network proof of concept, subject to confidentiality agreement. Doesn't that provide some of the details related to how, what I'm, I'm looking at as kind of a preview?
That, that's what we're looking to do. And really, it's a matter of transparency, right? We're not asking you to jump into something. We're, we're giving it to you for free. We're saying, hey, eyes wide open, this is what you're getting. And we're not charging any money for that. The only way that money would be charged to the city is if we executed everything flawlessly, okay? And then for some unknown reason, it could be, I, I don't even want to speculate, the city was like, yeah, I know it was perfect, but we're out. Now we've got a year and a half's worth of work in here. That number is not even a real number. I mean, it was something to just put out there, because our goal is, our goal is, is to work through the site agreement with the city attorneys, with, with the planning commission, with Mark, with everyone, to get something done that's right so that it's, so that you guys understand what you're doing. It just wouldn't have been fair to try to jam through it in, in a week before the city council meeting. So I said, you know what? Forget about that. I'll do it without an agreement. Everything's free.
Dean, from what you see, are you comfortable with this?
So with the documentation that's before the city council, no, which is why we don't have it presented as please approve this agreement. Mark has worked diligently on this project to get downtown Wi-Fi active. In the course of doing so, he's run into a number of roadblocks that were unforeseeable and that are outside of his control with the fiber optic line, with the changing role of NIU in the process. And what we're bringing forward is really, Alderman Jacobs said it, is an option for the council. So understand your concerns. We share your concerns. This is not in a format that we're bringing it forward and saying, please approve this agreement. That's why it has the, we need to work out the final details of it. The policy question for council is, if you wish to have the potential to have fiber optic, I'm sorry, to have Wi-Fi active in the downtown by Corn Fest, this is the only mechanism that we could identify that could possibly get that accomplished in the timeframe allotted. Accounting for all of the obstacles that we've encountered, we tried to come up with a creative and aggressive approach that would give the council the opportunity. If you say, we want to have Wi-Fi for Corn Fest and thereafter, as noted, it would persist thereafter. This is the mechanism to do that. If the council from a policy perspective would rather say, we'd rather take a more measured approach, we want to come back with the final agreements, we want to see everything in its ultimate form before it goes forward, we can completely accommodate that. We can accommodate that with the understanding that it just changes the timeline for implementation. So as we looked at this, when, when we were working on the agenda, when Mark and Molly and I were talking through this, we didn't want to make the assumption that the council wouldn't want to take an aggressive approach. We brought this forward to give you the option, but it is an option. It's your policy direction that determines where we go from here. And if you want us to come back with all of the agreements finalized in a form that I can tell the mayor, yes, we're happy with this. This is the best possible agreement for the city, we're happy to do that. We just didn't want to foreclose on the potential to move forward if the council saw, saw this as an important project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor to- Chair. I'm sorry, David. Again, I just, I, I am a bit worried that when this was presented to us on the first iteration, it was a totally different deal. It was no cost to use Digital Lobby and now there's a potential $9,000 cost. It was, NIU was going to own the equipment and we were going to help facilitate that purchase and those things. Now it's, we're responsible for the equipment and the maintenance and the long-term rollout, understanding the reality that technology changes very quickly and this could be outdated or outmoded very shortly. Again, the first iteration, when it was presented, it sounded like a great deal that we were getting and it was an interesting concept that we wanted to explore. Now, we're rushing something to get it done to show we did something and that rush is opening us up to a pretty significant liability. And it, it wasn't the deal that we had originally talked about. It's not even close to that deal. It's the opposite of that deal. But I, I would caution against it at this point, just for the mere fact to have it in two weeks to show we did something.
Can I just make one more, just one more, kind of, I hear what you're saying. I mean, it was ultimately this, this rush, city's liabilities roughly 16,000, university's roughly 14,000. We believe in this pro, we, we believe everything's set and everything, understand hedging against risk, but you're risking roughly 16 grand, we're risking about 14 grand. We're all for, let's, let's capture the data for Corn Fest. Student movement is also occurring. We'd kind of like to see that information too. This is value to the university. So it is, it is a partnership we would like to continue and pursue with the city.
Alderman O'Reilly.
In terms of NIU, the 14,000 that you're indicating that NIU is kind of at risk for, has, is there any official action or paperwork or documentation that has that figure or?
Yeah. So we presented a, it's coming out of my budget and it's, it's allocated and we have an IGA in front of, of the city now.
Oh, okay.
For the city attorney to look at. It's spelled out right there as an exhibit. As we, you know, to Mark's credit, we've been working hard to make this happen for this, to meet this Corn Fest deadline. So this is, this is coming right around the corner. So if we want to do this, this would be, we'd have to act now to make this happen.
Okay.
So, yes, but we have committed to it and we do have an agreement in front, an IGA to modify the previous agreements.
Okay.
Alderman Jacobs.
Who is going to be responsible for the long-term maintenance of the infrastructure and repair of the infrastructure?
So we have a couple of options with that. The city can maintain the equipment as we do with all of the other Wi-Fi equipment that's within the city buildings. The other option that has been presented, however, we have not worked out any details on it, but there is a possibility that Digital Lobby could in fact purchase that equipment back from us. And then we would, and then they would take on the, the liability. The city would lose an asset, but at the same time, Digital Lobby would be maintaining that along with the expanded project, should council decide to go through with that. So there's a, there's a few options that we have with that. There's also an option that's been brought to my attention by converting capital assets into operating expense. That has a higher cost to it, but there's a built-in replacement. But it then becomes an operating expense that we would have to pay annually for those, that equipment. And that's also something that we're not really ready to present, but that is also an option that could be presented to council.
We're being asked to- Under this agreement, the answer now is that we are going to be responsible for all this equipment. When we have, when NIU has an IT department of 70, 65, and we have an IT department of two, and we're going to take on the liability of that, again, we're not talking about one building with a router in it that we work in. We're talking about the entire downtown mesh net of, of internet. This is a major infrastructure proj, project.
The whole, the whole goal is to take the burden off the city, right? So it's our job at Digital Lobby to install the equipment. It's our, we have, we have alarms built in. The second an access point goes down, I know within three seconds. So it's our job to monitor and we use all the latest, you know, it's cloud-based. It's the best quality equipment with Ruckus gear. I'm sure you're familiar with Ruckus. And everything's built into that. We want to take the burden off the city. Plus, we want to make doggone sure it runs right. So we don't want to leave that up to the city. If, if the city decides that they want to do it, then absolutely, it's on their property, they can do it. But I, we assume, as with most municipalities that we deal with, you guys don't want that burden. Why should you guys have to pay the expense to maintain the system, roll trucks, have the oversight on it? We don't want that expense. Am I correct in assuming that?
Agreed.
Okay. So we are here to take that expense. That, that will not be an expense. That's the goal. It's for Digital Lobby to pick it up so the- It's for Digital Lobby to pick it up, so the municipality doesn't have to pay for it. That's the whole goal. And, and, and with this, because, guys, it takes time. Once this is in, now we got to work through the agreements. While we're working through the agreements, we're busy with the planning, okay? We're working with legal, and then, we're working with NIU, and then, we're also working with advertisers to make sure this thing's funded moving forward. That's not going to happen, it's going to take months to do that. So you guys are going to have plenty of time to react to this. You're not committed to anything, it's not costing you anything unless you boot me out of here for some ridiculous reason that makes no sense, and I put a year and a half's worth of work, and I put some nominal fee on there. That's all.
But for the fact that we're going to pay for the infrastructure upfront.
But see, you committed to paying for that way before you ever met me. Way before. Before I ever knew Mark, Mark was committed to putting the access points in downtown, and then he found out...
Again, I'm not blaming, I, I tend to...
Oh, it's okay.
The original iteration of the deal was NIU was going to take care of that problem for us.
For the whole, for the whole 30 grand?
And we were going to contribute to their effort of maintaining the system.
Right.
Now, in this agreement, as it sits in front of us, we are in charge of the system, and we have all of the costs and infrastructure, and hopefully NIU will come in with their share, and I, I believe they will. But the long-term infrastructure maintenance and repair has now been placed on us, and that's not Digital Lobby's fault, I'm not blaming that on you.
No, I know, and I'm not, I'm not saying...
It's NIU that's now dumped that on us, and saying, well, just throw off the 30 grand, and we'll see how it goes later.
Hold on, hold on. So, what, here's something you don't know, though. So, when Mark came to us, we took one of our engineers and engineered all this, okay? We also, because we have a great relationship with the manufacturers, we got the city rock bottom, our price, no markup, no nothing, we saved him money on the equipment, on the, on the cloud services, we're not charging anything for that. So really, the net-net to the city is, you would have paid a lot more to get this original proof of concept, again, whether I was here or not, okay? All we're, all Mark's trying to do is get this program kick-started, so we're not back here in a year, trying to figure this out, and trying to get this pushed through council. We're saying, hey, full transparency, here you go, everything's free. That's all I'm saying. So I want you to keep that in mind, because if this gets kicked down the road, we're going to have to wait another year, maybe, by the time everything gets through?
I appreciate your product is free, but it's not free to the taxpayer. And the deal has changed significantly. It's not you that I have my issue with, it's probably Sly somewhere up the university up the road. You have the staff and the infrastructure to deal with these mesh net internets. You do this on campus already, we don't. We have two people in our IT department, three technically. We don't have the capability to run this network, and the deal was that you would take on that responsibility as a core of what you already do, and now we're going to be here in six months, and we're going to have IT during budget saying, well, we need another full-time staff to manage this internet, because we don't have the staff to do it. Again, it's not Digital Lobby I have the issue with, in that case, maybe.
No, we don't.
Maybe.
If we go forward, yeah.
If we go forward.
If it all goes forward, Digital Lobby would do that for us.
And if we know it's an additional cost to our taxpayers.
My just wanted to clarify one thing, NIU was never going to give you the functionality that Digital Lobby can, never. When we extend our, our infrastructure, it does not look like, you don't know what's going on at the Egyptian.
I understand, I agree.
You don't get a lot of the things that work well for city planning, and a lot of things actually that excited NIU about what Digital Lobby can do, we never had it built into any of our original IGAs. So I just want to make sure, you're getting, to me, you're getting a much better product. I, I like NIU, I love, we have very competent engineers, and by the way, we only have, we only have about, we have about five engineers that do this, we don't, 70 is nice, but, no, the reality of what we really have inside...
And, and all of IT, yes, but the people that can just do this. We have three.
I understand.
And we have zero that do this.
Trust me, but you got Mark, man, he's, he's, he's good, he really is. But, beyond that, we were always going to be working with you to partner to get to do the maintenance, to do replacing stuff on poles, it was always going to be that kind of partnership.
But we don't have that agreement in front of us.
I understand, and I'm with you on that. I get, I get that we're not, we're not hardened, and I understand there's a risk, and I get it's taxpayers' money, but we're university money, too. We, we understand the same thing, we looked at the same equation, a little bit differently because we're university, we believe in this product, we believe in this whole scenario that's being proposed to us, and we think there's a lot of value to what's going on. But, I just wanted to make sure, because it is, it is a different, you're going to get much better information out of Digital Lobby than you with us, so, that's all.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I would hope, I would hope we're better educated than we were 30 minutes ago. Alderman, favor?
So, I, I think the bottom line is, I think we're, we're going to pay about $16,000 for some Wi-Fi hotspots that may eventually be reimbursed through Digital Lobby, and if, if we don't go forward, we're going to pay a $9,000 fee, but we're sharing, is the $9,000 fee, that, that'll be on the city, because NIU is going to go forward with Digital Lobby.
Correct. If, if, if that scenario happens, it would be a $9,000 charge.
I, I like the idea of the, the data collection, obviously knowing the numbers of people that are coming and traveling through our city and things like that, obviously, it's something we have no idea today. We talk about how many people visit when there's something going on at the Egyptian, or how many people come and visit during Corn Fest, or even the other events that are going to be going on later in the year, so. I, I think I can throw some support behind that, I guess.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanoukis?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
No.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I think that is it. We now move to communications. Ask, and we ask each of the council members if they have anything to report or communicate. Alderman Jacobson.
I want to take a quick moment to take stock of where we are tonight. I know over the last several weeks, there has been lots of conversation about waste management and LRS and the switchover. I was assured by many residents of our community that were 100% without a doubt positive that this city would not return back the money to its residents in the savings that came out of the bill. And I realize that the nomenclature and the effect of what we did earlier is that, and I think it's important to note that and to highlight that, that yes, the residents will now be receiving 100% of the difference in cost from the switch, which I think will surprise and pleasantly surprise many people, more so than they believed it was going to happen. We have a new clerk that at one time was considered by my predecessor the lunatic fringe, which I find quite amusing.
Nice.
Again, welcome to our world. Again, when you look at those things and how different this city is, in two years of a different administration, when you bring in the right people that are focused on the right problems, and even though we don't always disagree, as we saw with several votes tonight, progress is being made. People are used to the way things have been done in DeKalb with air quotes, for those listening on TV, and I think it's important to note and to highlight that things are different now. This is a different way of doing things, and it's slow, and it's grinding, and it's full of effort and time, and sometimes some anger, but we're getting there, and we're going in the right direction for the first time in a long time, my entire time sitting in this seat. Thank you.
Alderman Fanoukis.
Dave, I think instead of the term lunatic fringe, I might have used the British term loyal opposition. And Lynn, you and I had our conversation, so I know where we're at on that. But anyway, hey, just to remind everybody that the DeKalb school systems open up this Wednesday, 8:15, so please watch out for students going to and from school. Also, NIU has already had people begin to move into town. The main move-in day is Friday, August 24th, and classes start there on the 27th. Of course, that coincides with the start of Corn Fest also. And then one other event that I'd like to highlight is also Corn Fest week, weekend, there's a high school football triple header at Husky Stadium on that Saturday, featuring six high schools out of the Chicago area. Just as a side note on that, the head coach for one of those schools is Jordan Lynch, making his premier appearance as a head coach in the high school ranks. Thank you.
Alderman Markwart.
No report.
Alderman Fagan.
I just want to say, about two and a half weeks ago, I had a hiccup in my life with my health, and with my health, and I just want to reach out to Northwestern Mutual Kishawaki Hospital, and their service, the emergency room, nurses, doctors, technicians did an excellent job. The CAT Lab, I can't speak enough about the CAT Lab that we have here. I'm trying to think, how long's that been in service, chief? Yeah, it's, it's amazing the lives they save. It's just, it's just incredible. And to have that in our community, it saves a lot of helicopter rides. The staff and the nurses at Kishawaki was just excellent, the professionalism, and I want to thank them and everyone that had reached out to me in the last two and a half weeks. Thank you.
Great to have you healthy.
It's good to be healthy.
Yeah, that's great. Alderman Noriko.
With the transition to a new city clerk, we owe thanks to our deputy clerk Ruth Scott, who really stepped in and stepped up in a lot of ways over the last several months. So, I want to thank her and hope she has some time to have a little bit of rest, and to keep singing.
Alderman Verbic.
Let's pass along, thanks to the Regional Office of Education for gathering a group of us to discuss truancy. We call it Truancy Summit. I was joined by Mayor Smith. We're laying the groundwork for what we can do to get our 656 children that are identified as truant to school and keep them in school.
Thank you. Alderman, favor?
No report.
Reminder, 10:30 tomorrow, we will swear in Lynn Fazekas as our city clerk, followed by a news conference for any of our local media. I just want to say, I've said it publicly, and I've said it in grocery store conversations, I've said it in this building, and I will continue to say it. I am so proud to work with this city council. You know, we don't always make decisions that pleases everybody, but we work hard, we listen, sometimes we take too long on a issue, but it's because we care. And I know each and every one of you do, and, again, I'm just, I'm just real proud of, of the effort that, that all of us are, are trying to make on behalf of the citizens of the city of DeKalb. Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott, any report?
No, sir.
Dean Freyders.
Just very briefly, Mayor, for the past several years, there have been times when the city has had policy issues on which it has disagreed with the DeKalb Area Rental Association, and at times that relationship has not always been, I think, one that has been positive between the parties. Chief Lowry, during his tenure, has worked extremely diligently to build a better relationship with DARA, and to build a relationship that is premised upon trust, and a lot of mutual disclosure, and a lot of information sharing, and working to find outcomes that improve the interests for both parties. Just recently, there was some information shared regarding the AGN task force and some of the things that we're looking at, and one of the elements that was included in that was a discussion about security cameras and their role in the city, and it, it was presented in a fashion that hadn't previously been discussed with DARA. And I wanted to call out and give credit to Glenn Robey and Will Heinisch. Their response to that was just to reach out and say, hey, you know, this is a topic we're interested in, it's something we want to talk about, and we responded to them immediately and said, you know, absolutely, that's something we're in very early stages of looking at and getting informed about, and we want to meet with you and talk about it before that's something that would go further forward. It was a, it was representative of a relationship that Chief Lowry has been building, and representative of their interests in serving the community and partnering with the city to find ways that we can improve the quality of our, our rental stock, and find ways that property owners that have an interest in the community, an investment in the community, that want it to be improved, can work with the city collaboratively. We really appreciated their outreach, and we look forward to working with them to continue to find ways of improving the quality of our rental housing.
Thank you, Dean, I appreciate it. Molly Talkington, our interim city manager.
Just a couple of updates. Well, one, I do want to also thank our deputy city clerks Ruth and Shelley for their hard work and dedication while you, the mayor, sought candidates for the city clerk vacancy, and thank you Lynn Fazekas for your willingness to serve the city in that capacity. On another note, our human resources director, Chris Randall, is, has accepted a new position, so she's advancing in her career, we wish her luck and thank her for her service here at city, she's down the line. But with that said, we've talked frequently here about the FY19 budget process and looking at that five-year financial plan, that's identified a structural imbalance in the city's general fund, and that we have a budget gap to fill. So I'm taking advantage of the vacancy that's coming with the departure of the HR director and not filling that position. So the HR department is now going to report through the city manager's office, this was a model that was done in the city a few years back, so we're going back to that model. And in the meantime, HR will be reporting to our interim assistant city manager, Ray Munch. Now, that position is still going to be considered as part of the overall look of the organizational structure that I'm working on right now with our budget process, and through the department submissions and what we're looking at for our service plans and how we can meet that budget gap for the city. And so, you will hear more information, really more on that, addressing the budget gap at our budget workshop in September. Then we'll go over in more detail kind of the items that the departments, actually, from employees, the unions, oh, we've gotten a lot of feedback and ideas from people that we're looking at right now, and putting that together for city council to review in September.
Thank you for your continued efforts, Molly. Acting Assistant City Manager Ray Munch.
So this Wednesday, August 15th, at 11:30 a.m., we'd like to invite the community and members of city council to join us on the front steps of city hall. Our management interns, Walker and Jase, have been working on kind of a fun and quirky project, something called City Hall Selfie Day. This is kind of a social media phenomenon that's taken off, and they, they thought they'd have some fun with it. So they've been putting it on social media, they brought, got in touch with proudly DeKalb and NIU to have representations, so we're going to take a community selfie in front of city hall and put it on social media, so it's kind of a, just a fun civic involvement type of activity that the interns thought they would spearhead, so feel free to join us Wednesday at 11:30 on the front steps of city hall.
Chief Lowry.
No report.
Chief Hicks.
No report.
Community Development Director Charlton.
Thank you. Just real briefly, there's two cases coming up on our August 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Fence variation is being requested at 145 Heritage, that's the first case, and the second case is a rezoning from commercial to P Plan Development Commercial at 1786 through 1792 Sycamore Road to address some changes in use at that location. Thank you.
Tim Holdman, our Public Works Director.
As you may know, our construction season is well underway. We're making good way, good headway in the Elwood neighborhood, will be completed there by August 23rd, and then we'll move to Ridge Drive and then East Taylor. The Annie Glidden and Fairview intersection project is progressing. That project is scheduled to be completed in October. The Toll Road entrance at Annie Glidden, entrance and exit is open, fully open, and so now, we're conducting our work there. Also, the MetroNet, high-speed internet, they're working on the ring that goes around the city, we just approved that permit, and so they're a little bit behind what their schedule was, but they'll be moving into the neighborhoods over the next two or three weeks.
Yeah. You know, let, let me just interject something, Tim. I, in driving... I, in driving through the Elwood historic neighborhood, it is a mess, you know, it really is. I mean, the roads are torn up and all that, but boy, that's going to be good when it's all finished. And I like your idea of taking a certain part of our city, a neighborhood, and concentrating some work. I think it's just going to be great. And that's, that's one man's opinion. So thank you.
And the residents have been very patient, and we really appreciate that. So, lastly, we're gearing up for the change in our garbage collection vendor. The last collection days for waste management will be the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first. That's the normal Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. There will be a vendor come behind and pick up those carts after they empty them, the waste management carts. So you will no longer have waste management carts at that time. They'll be either that day or the day after.
So we want to leave those carts out?
Yes, we want to leave those carts out on that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the last pickup. You'll leave your carts out so that the collection company can come and collect them. Prior to that, Lake Shore will provide the new carts. We don't have an exact schedule, and we'll let residents know exactly when that's going to occur, but in the meantime, you can go to their website and order the size carts that you want. Remember, a ninety-six refuse and a sixty-five recycling is the default. If that's what you want, you don't have to do anything, that's what you'll get. But if you want a combination other than that, you can go to the website or call them and they'll set you up with what you want. So that's all I've got.
HR Director Chris Randall?
Hey, just as a reminder, Heidi Voorhees from Gov HR will be presenting at the committee of the whole of August twenty-seventh, the draft of the position profile for the city manager and to allow for further direction from council and community input. And lastly, I just want to thank the elected officials for being extremely supportive of all of the wonderful HR initiatives that we accomplished during my tenure, and I all, I will miss that sentiment. I also want to let you know I am going to miss tremendously working with the employees of the city of DeKalb. They are a bunch of hard-working, dedicated people that really have passion for the work they do, and you can't find this and you can't train people to have that feeling. And I just want to thank all my, my peers for being so, you know, supporting and understanding and high achievers, and you made me a better person, and I only have you guys to thank for that, and don't ever be a stranger. Thank you.
And our very, our very best to you, Chris. Mark Thorson, our IT director?
Thank you, Mayor. Two items that I wanted to cover. We've been working to determine the, the causes of the audio issues on the YouTube videos that are on the site. We've been able to isolate where we think the problem is. We've actually reworked the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from August eighth, and now that one, you can actually hear everyone speaking and you don't have to crank your volume all the way up. So we, we don't anticipate seeing those issues because we think we've narrowed down where the problem is, but we still need to solve the problem because we've got, we essentially have a triple redundant system in place because we have lost videos before and we're desperately trying to avoid anything like that happening when the inevitable hardware failure occurs. So part of that is where we think that problem is. We're isolating it by using one of the other methods to make this happen. So just understand that we are working, we know about the problem, we are working through it, and we think we've identified where the issue is. Also, with the website redesign, right now, IT's working with the city manager's office to finalize dates and locations for, to be able to engage the public on the website redesign itself, and I believe that's going to start in September, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We have no executive session scheduled for tonight. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
The move is seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night.